Then I'll also mute everyone unless they're planning commissioner as well, but one moment will get us on YouTube.
No, when you're ready.
Going to pause the recording for a technical bit. He pulled you one moment.
I will call to order the Monday, June 28th, 2021 meeting of the Oregon City Planning Commission. Now, before I begin, I just wanted to say I have documents absolutely everywhere. I'm going to do my absolute best to stay organized here, but if I have a pause here and there, I would appreciate your patience as I try to keep this thing organized. All right. Before we begin, like to do a quick roll call so we can for the for the public record, know who which commissioners are here. So I'm going to begin in no particular order. Commissioner Staggs. Commissioner Stoll.
Present.
Commissioner West.
Present.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Gage.
Here.
And I Commissioner Schlagenhauer am here. All right. I don't think we have any, but I'm going to ask anyway, are there any public comments not on the agenda? Okay. All right. Oh, by the way, I cannot see the full list of of people present. So if someone's got their hand up, it's possible I may miss them. So if somebody could help me with that, it's going to be difficult for me to try to stay on top of that, on top of everything else. Thank you. Okay. Let's go straight into Agenda item number one. Agenda item number one is a public hearing. It is a legislative hearing, which means we have a legislative script. And I will begin with that. A a public hearing on a legislative application is scheduled for tonight. Our role is to conduct the public hearing and to make recommendations about the matter before us. In making those decisions, we must apply the applicable codes and laws and cannot vary from or change those laws or codes. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Upon a recommendation from the planning commission on a legislative action, the city commission shall hold at least one public hearing on the proposal. Any interested person may provide written or oral testimony on the proposal at or prior to the hearing. Public testimony will be called on in the order it was requested in advance of the meeting. If you have not emailed city staff at planning@orcity.org to request to speak and would like to testify, please do so now and identify the item you would like to speak on. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name and city of residence. We don't need your complete address, just the city of residence. If you would like to receive a copy of the notice of decision, please state your mailing address or email address. I just contradicted myself. Okay, five minutes for representatives of a recognized neighborhood association, government agency, or other incorporated public interest organization, three minutes for individuals. Members of the planning commissioner to be unbiased. As a result, I will call on each commissioner to disclose any potential conflicts such as family, financial, or business relationships with any of the applicants or with regard to the land in question. At this point, I will call along the commissioners in order to see if any feel they have any conflicts of interest in this legislative hearing, which I did not name yet. It is LEG 21-00002. And I will begin with Commissioner Staggs. Any conflicts of interest? And you're muted, I think.
Sorry. Yeah, I have no conflict of interest or any other expertise contact at all.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Stoll.
No conflict of interest. None of those things.
Okay, Commissioner West.
No conflict of interest or experte contact, but I do want to declare that I have seen their presentation at the OCBA meeting. And I go to many OCBA meetings and have seen many other presentations as well, but just for the record.
Okay, we're talking about the legislative file about the I better read the whole thing. I'm sorry, we're not talking about the landfill yet. It is the legislative amendment, the chapter 15.2 Oregon municipal code, okay, which contains the standards for signs. The amendment establishes a public art mural program and provides criteria upon which staff to arts commission and city commission evaluate proposed art installations. Should we start over or Commissioner Staggs and Stoll still good? Okay.
Still good.
I'm good too. I know it. No expertise or conflict of interest with the first agenda item.
Okay, all right. So I messed that up good right off the bat. Okay, Commissioner.
No conflicts of interest and no expertise contacts.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gage.
No conflicts of interest and no expertise contact.
All right. And then as for myself, I have no conflicts of interest with this. And I've had no expertise contact. I'm not sure if you're asking for that, but I haven't talked to anybody about this as well. All right. Let me see where we're at. Okay. Go. Okay, we will now commence with the staff report or legislative file 21-0002. All the other things I've already read, and I believe this is going to be Kelly Reed.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to share my screen. Okay. Can you all see that? Yes, great, thanks. I'm Kelly Reed, planner with the Community Development Department. The thanks for the introduction and I'll just clarify for legislative files, expertise contacts are not really part of it. It's legislation. And so we're all allowed to talk about it ahead of time and doesn't have to be disclosed. So this is an amendment to the code, to the signs chapter of the code to create a public art mural program. And this application was submitted to us from another department of the city, the Economic Development Department. So the amendment would add definitions in the definitions section of that code chapter to support the mural program, including defining how a public art mural would be considered differently from a sign. It includes criteria and standards for public art murals. It includes a process for approval of public art murals. And this process is proposed to be handled through the Arts Commission. Arts Commission is actually already codified in section 2.26 of the code. It includes identification of zoning districts where public art murals will be permitted. And there is language to ensure that First Amendment rights are upheld, meaning that the code continues to remain content neutral with respect to any kind of signs, including murals. So the proposed zoning districts where that are in the draft amendment where murals would be permitted are mixed use downtown, mixed use corridor one and two, Willamette Falls downtown district institutional zones. I think general commercial was added from the last time you saw this at a work session. And then any use that's listed under permitted uses in institutional district, but located in a non-institutional zone. So that would include things like schools, religious institutions, parks. Many times those are located in a residential zone, but they are an institutional use. So this would allow a mural on those buildings as well. And this isn't on the slide, but the code also clarifies that murals would only be permitted on non-residential buildings in these zones. So if there's a single family house or even an apartment building, I believe the murals wouldn't be permitted on those buildings, only on commercial or institutional buildings. Can you all hear me? Okay. I've had sound issues in the past. Okay, so the process is for Arts Commission appointed by the city commission or the mayor to review in a public hearing, the mural proposal. Absent an active arts commission, the code allows for a staff review. And that's a change from last time you saw this, I believe, last time planning commission was proposed to be the alternative to the Arts Commission. And so that has been changed based on your input to a staff level review. There would still be public. So either way, arts commission or staff, it would be public notice provided and the decision would be appealable. The difference there is that with the Arts Commission, you'd have a public hearing with the staff review, there would be a public hearing, just notice. The approval criteria for legislative amendments is really just is this amendment to the code consistent with our current comprehensive plan? So I'm showing here the goals and policies that are included in the written staff report where I have included findings for how this proposed mural proposal, sorry, the mural program is consistent with our comprehensive plan, which calls for neighborhood livability and promotion of tourism and place making within our neighborhoods. And so the findings really kind of explain just how allowing murals in the city does is consistent with with how we our vision for the city that's in our comprehensive plan. And I think the first and foremost in our comprehensive plan, our goal one is for community involvement and the Economic Development Department has definitely checked, check the box there and then some with a lot of community involvement for this proposal, including I'm going back all the way to 2014 and 2015 when we updated our sign code and first conceived of a mural program. And now it's finally here for adoption. And so the staff recommendation is to that the planning commission recommend approval to the city commission. And the potential city commission hearings would be on July 7th and July 21st for the first and second reading of the ordinance. And then the amendments, I'm sorry, the the heading at the bottom is incorrect. You can ignore that. The amendments would be effective 30 days after after adoption by the city commission. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Reed? If your hand is up, I am not seeing it.
Commissioner Mitchell has a question followed by Commissioner West.
Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell.
So Ms. Reed, my my big concern on this, and we've talked about it before. And and I know that the code is written to be content control and not and we know that based on the Oregon Supreme Court, we we can't control content. So what in the code, what is there in the code to protect against a situation where a mural that some or all members of our community might find offensive?
Well, I will, I'll let the applicant touch on that as well. I'm so I'm sure that they'll have more to add, but I would say that the the Arts Commission, their criteria is based mostly on kind of what what kind of materials are used and if it's going to what it's going to do to the wall of the building, you know, is it going to cover up any windows that we don't want to cover up? And so it's very much not about the content. The through the approval process, the mural becomes and it actually has an easement includes an easement that is dedicated to the city for at least five years. So the property owner and the artist both have to, you know, agree to give the city an easement for the for that mural. And so I think that the the public process of going through the Arts Commission partially addresses that that issue. But I think that we, you know, because of First Amendment concerns, we we can't really add any anything about the content to the code. But I'll let Matthew, when he, when he talks, touch on that probably a lot better than I would answer it.
Okay, Commissioner West.
Thank you. Sorry, I switched from an iPad to a computer and I've lost my photo again. So first of all, do we have an arts commission? Do we presently have an arts commission? This?
I think the code allows for one, but we the there is not currently an active arts commission.
So then that gets me back to reading that chapter 226 of the code that requires the Arts Commission to review things. And so you have it set up right now. So in lieu of it, the Economic Development Director Department could review it, but I the way I interpret that code is it's the Arts Commission that's supposed to review murals. So that that's kind of troubling to me.
Yeah. Would you like me to answer that? Or do I wait for a later date?
Yeah, I think when when your turn comes, then I'll I'll let you take that question because yeah. Is that okay if Matthew answers that in his presentation?
Of course.
Great.
The other thing, you know, so this, so I really appreciate the Economic Development Department Department going back over this since the last time we talked about this and and getting a planning to have a lesser role in reviewing these things. I can see all the work that they've done there, but I am struggling with our Economic Development Department reviewing it or staff reviewing it. And then I'm also in historic, well, if it's in a historic review board, and I have to apologize, I'm just like jerk here with papers everywhere tonight. But I don't understand why historic review board is also on the option of reviewing murals. It should be the Arts Commission, the way I read that code. So if somebody can explain to me why all that, why this new process is usurps the old one.
Sure. The the circular view board would only get involved if there was a mural proposed on the primary facade of a historic structure. So there we have some some materials in your agenda packet that pertain to kind of what it means when a mural is proposed in the historic district or on a historic building. And so what the board, what the historic review board has recommended to the city commission, and this is actually not part of the code amendment, but it's part of the city commission overall package for the program is a new HRB policy that would allow murals proposed on a historic building, but on the side of the rear to not have to be reviewed by the board. And murals in the district, but not on a historic building also would not have to be reviewed by the board. They would still go to the Arts Commission, right? So step one is, is it historic? Do we need historic review? Yes or no? And then step two is Arts Commission review. And so that that secondary review for the overall mural program always happens. And and the historic review may or may not happen depending on where the mural is proposed and what part of the building.
So once again, I'm struggling why with how a new HRB policy could usurp the Arts Commission where they are supposed to review the murals first.
I see. I suppose the timing, so I think that both would happen, the the historical review board would be looking at whether the mural would what the effect would be on the historic building. So if it has an at if the board finds that it has an adverse effect on a building and does not approve it, then it would not go to the Arts Commission. So they're vetting that and getting that step done before it even makes it to the Arts Commission. I think that that's the order that that things would go. And Matthew can correct me if I'm wrong.
So once again, I find I'm finding that hard to support. If the I think the minimum I would agree on this would be if it was a joint meeting with the HRB and the Arts Commission, if you have to have the HRB involved in it, but I, you know, in the past, it's just been the Arts Commission doing it, no matter what area of town it was in.
This is Laura. We would treat it just like we would development that has to meet both standards. So say you're building something that needs planning commission approval and also needs HRB approval. They'd have to do both. We wouldn't combine the two. And that's because in this case, HRB is regulated very differently than the Arts Commission. So we would want to make sure that we adhere to the procedures that are in place because of the nature of HRB.
Has this changed because the mural code is now in the sign code? Is that is that what you're also saying here that the process has had to change?
But there hasn't been a process for historic review of murals in the past because there have our code hasn't allowed murals. I mean, I think the the murals that are existing in town are they predate our sign code, I'm guessing. And and so we just haven't had any sort of process at all for HRB review of murals. So we had to create this and we had the HRB look at a few different options. And this is the one they proposed to the city commission.
Okay, I'm going to jump in here. I know there's some concerns here, but I would like to see what Mr. Weintraub has to say. Maybe he can answer some questions and then we can we can go back to discussing this some more. So if that's okay with everybody, I think we should try that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Can everyone hear me? Okay. And there's no feedback. He's got a little feedback there. Great. I believe I'm great. If I could share my screen, have to have a short presentation as well, or be allowed to share my screen. Awesome. All right. For the record, my name is Matthew Weintraub. I am the Tourism Program Specialist here at the City of Oregon City. And so here I'm talking, here I talk to you about our Oregon City Original Art Mural Code update. So just talk a little bit about for the record what we've done and also address a few of those questions that have come up and make myself in the the proposal available. So here we are, right? So our goal of this project has always been to develop a piece of code that the commission Oregon City Commission would adopt, which would enable the painting of new and original art murals in Oregon City, just like this one you see on the library in Willawa, Oregon. We know that public art, right? It catalyzes community. It creates a sense of place, attracts visitation, increases tourism, and generally just contributes to a healthier, more holistic community. Previous work right in this area was initiated in 2014 and 2015, but there wasn't strong direction from the the city commission to pursue it, though it was identified more recently as a goal of the Oregon City Tourism Stakeholder Table Process. And in 2020, the city staff received direction from the commission to prepare this piece of code. So they said right in 2020 was identified as a priority and received direction from the city commission to develop this code. Staff, both in the Community Development Department and the Economic Development Department, reviewed the existing draft code, code from other jurisdictions and conducted research around the feasibility of such project. We conducted additional stakeholder meetings, received input from city commission, from HRB, and adjusted our proposed and draft code accordingly. We also reviewed this proposed program with you all here in the planning commission in the spring. One of those elements was to review the role of the planning commission during that first year, incorporate those that feedback. Went to the Citizen Involvement Committee, incorporated their feedback as well. And so here we are, right here. I do see, I just want to say that Brian Shaw has entered the waiting room. I don't know if that came up on mine. Okay, I didn't know if I was the one controlling it all of a sudden. Great, thanks Laura. And and so in the summer of 2021, we'll also initiate a recruitment process for the Oregon City Arts Commission. So to answer Commissioner West's questions, we don't have an active arts commission. It's been dormant or fallow, if you ever, if you know, if you want to be in that agrarian mindset for some time. Really since the early 2000s, but we have received strong community feedback for a revitalized, a renewed and variated arts commission. So we will actually be putting out a call for recruitment, hopefully in the coming week or two, after we provide that update to the city commission at the July seventh commission meeting, right? So we would would hope to have an active arts commission towards the tail end of the summer after a a set recruitment period and a training as well. All right. And so kind of back to our Arts Commission process or sorry, a mural a mural code process is we submit that finalized code to the city commission for adoption and then hold that first meeting of the Arts Commission, hopefully at the tail end of the summer as well. So just reviewing some of that feedback. We we had some concerns from stakeholders, from staff, right around our First Amendment protections that this any public mural code should be accompanied by a friendly, really a user friendly how to guide that we should ensure continued preservation, preservation of historic buildings, that the permitting process be clear and attainable. And then also we got some recent feedback around the the PLC, a maintenance agreement between the parties, and also the role of the planning commission. I think I will skip this a little bit because Kelly did a much better job than I can do around the role of historic review. I will use my phone if, if folks have more questions there. But then just kind of go into some of the changes to the draft code and kind of how we we came to the code proposed code that you have here before you. Obviously, there is no specific zoning districts identified through the process this initiated as a tourism process. So we kind of had identified those mixed use downtown, the Willamette Falls District and those mixed use corridors, but then really understood that institutional and commercial and also as Kelly mentioned institutionally zone bill or buildings that are institutional use, but in a non-institutional zoning. For example, an elementary school would be a great place to potentially have a public art mural and so expanded that as well. Oh, thank you, Laura. I am intending that. Interesting. Okay. Interesting, okay. Can can folks see? Let me change my slide now. Okay, sorry, I was changing slides for the past six minutes. So I apologize. There's some lovely murals here. You'll you'll see there's that one on the library. And there's a fantastic mural on the side of a building in Sisters. But here we go. All right, so proposed code changes. There we go, folks can see that now. Great. So we we need to clarify how covering windows and doors that prohibited the use of the openings of these. So we provided a little more clarity there in in the code. We removed potential regulations that could impinge on those First Amendment rights. Strong concept proposed design is feasible or putting, whether it's staff, the Arts Commission or any, any body here in the position to make a judgment on the appropriateness of a of a piece of art. We removed those. Clarified that the mural should seek to mitigate the impacts of vandalism and weather, usually through some kind of more robust paint or material or coating. And also the role of the Planning Commission was our, I think, our favorite topic from from April. We removed that. And in lieu of a standing Arts Commission approval authority would reside within the Economic Development Department as a review authority. You know, as as I mentioned earlier, we are hoping to put out a recruitment call for new members for our Arts Commission in the coming week, obviously next month, we obviously know that's in a few days. And so we are hoping that just because of that recruitment process, that we may see a few mural applications before that recruitment process is finalized. And so this would just allow staff to expedite that process in the interim. But it is not the intention, right, to have, to not have an Arts Commission. So doing them in tandem. So I will stop that presentation and then answer any questions folks may have at this point.
I am sorry, I was trying to find my unmute button. Okay, I do have a question for you. I know we can't talk about the content of art, but there has to be some kind of a, I don't know, a state law, federal law. There's got to be limits to what can be considered art. There's got to be some limit on violence or pornography or racial photos. I mean, there's got to be some kind of limits.
Carrie Richter, our deputy attorney can talk about that.
Perfect, thank you.
Carrie, I don't know if you're able to address that. Also, maybe. muted, and it looks like her screen might be frozen.
Perhaps we could go to the next question and then when she comes back live, we can have her answer it.
Okay, that was my only question, thank you.
Looks like, do looks like we got Stephanie and Mike.
You can call on them, but I can do it too, Commissioner West.
Okay, sorry, but yeah, I was sorry, I was just waiting. I'm happy to do that. Yeah, I will guess go with Mike and then Stephanie. Maybe, Mike looks like he's muted. Daphne, do you want to go and then while Mike's looking for the unmute button?
Well, I'm happy to go, except I wanted to hear everyone else's comments before I really added anymore. I, there's a couple of ways I could handle my opinions on this. I could, at this point, vote no on it, or I could could make a motion to carry it over until they form an Arts Commission and then have the proper review process set up, the way that the chapter 2.26 is of the Arts Commission. So that's what, that's my feelings right now, where I stand on it, is I would like to see this just put on hold, get the Arts Commission, come back, and it's a go, from my point of view.
Gotcha. Yeah, I think our our hope is that we, so it's been expressed to city staff that there are several business owners, artists that would like to commence an application for murals or a public art mural. And so this, the pathway we have designed here would allow the right staff to review in that interim. And because when the, I guess, when our Arts Commission was codified, we did not have a public art mural program. So this would be a new addition rather than kind of a a return to how things were before. I guess that's the the best way to explain that.
Thank you.
So Chair Schlagenhauer, we do have people signed up to speak on this agenda item if we want to go to that. And then we can follow up with the Assistant City Attorney.
Yes, absolutely. Am I muted? No, okay, we do have a public comment from, I hope this is correct, Mrs. Triest Andrews.
Hi, everybody, good evening. This is kind of a monumental night because it's a long time coming. And I think the one comment that I want to make is I know everybody is always nervous about liability, but there are lots of safety measures put in place on a mural. It has to be agreed on between the owner, between the funder, between the muralists. They have to submit drawings. They have to submit an approval process. So I don't want anybody to think that there would, it could easily just be thrown up against a wall and that it would be something that would be offensive. There are laws in place that you cannot defame somebody. There's that too. So just to calm everybody down, of course, we have to honor free speech. But at the same time, there's a lot of safety measures that people have put into place and talked about when this finally goes through. And so it's not as dangerous or scary that people might think. And then the only thing I want to say is I just want to give a big thank you. Laura Turway, mountain of paperwork. Thank you so much for all your hard work. Matthew Weintraub, just for pushing this through over the last year. James Graham, Liz Hanam, who I met several times on possible sites and what we could do. Victoria Minick from the Chamber of Commerce, our own Guild members, Linda Orson, who's here tonight, that dug up mountains of paperwork from 20 years ago when we had an art commission and we had murals in Oregon City and tried to help as much as we can with the city to kind of give them stuff that they would need. And Kathy Rowe, who's here tonight, who's been a muralist for 10 years and had a lot of great input on how to safeguard things and how not to let something offensive be put up and has been working with me, we're already measuring and surveying and talking to several sites about murals. So just a big thank you. This is monumental for me to see this finally come to pass. And thanks for everybody's support and all of your hard work. Thank you, thank you, Oregon City.
Thank you. All right. Did anybody wish to ask more questions or were we ready to close the hearing and make a decision?
I'm sorry, Chair Schlagenhauer, there was another public testimony form that came in from Kathy Rowe.
I did not see that one. I apologize. Okay, Mrs. Rowe, are you with us?
Hi, can everybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Great, I'm I'm Kathy Rowe. I live in Oregon City and I just, I wanted to say that I'm really excited for this process too. I'm just really glad that you guys are moving forward with this and and just a second triest that I'm really thankful for all of you to be working on this and making it happen. And I just can't wait to see more murals in in this city, coming from, from a place where I did a lot of murals and then finding out that this, that it's not possible here for so long. It was, it was very frustrating. So I'm very excited for where the future is going in Oregon City. So thank you all.
Thank you very much. All right. Yeah, you know, I have to apologize that maybe some of our hesitancy or some of our concerns about art. I think we just, we've just seen so many bad things over time that we we worry about the worst case scenarios where maybe we should be thinking more about. You know, most of these are probably going to be great assets to the city. So maybe, maybe we're overthinking it a little too much. I know the cities had a lot of, a lot of hours put into this. I know a lot of other people have a ton of time put into these, into these legislative files. So I guess we shouldn't really discount all their hard work and I know they know what they're doing. So I'm going to ask, I don't know if this is a question for Kelly or for Ms. Turway. Our options tonight, I think, I think we were discussing a motion for a continuance earlier, but is that, is that what we want to continue with now? Or would you rather send the file to the City Commission with a recommendation for approval? Send it to the conditionist's recommendation for denial? Or is there something else that we need to continue this for, to discuss further?
I would suggest that we provide the applicant or Matthew, in this case, opportunity for rebuttal on those public comments. And then we can have the Deputy City Attorney Carrie Richter respond to the question about is there absolute legal limits as to content as it relates to murals? And for the planning commission as a whole, this one's interesting because it's legislative. Those are always kind of fun, but we would encourage you to look at what are the applicable approval criteria? In this case, mainly it's the comprehensive plan and how does allowance of murals apply to that? If the planning commission separately wants to have a sentence that staff conveys to the City Commission about the risk associated with content, we're happy to do that too. But wanted to gear us towards the approval criteria for the legislative file and then recommend that order of Matthew than Carrie.
Okay, all right. So I guess we can let Matthew offer his rebuttal on that. And I don't know if we have a time limit, I don't know if we need to.
Okay, I think I have five minutes. I don't think, I think I have five minutes. Don't think I need all of it. I just want to say thank you Kathy and Triest for your public comment. Definitely has been a interesting road to get here and would like to say thank you to Kathy, to Linda, to Triest especially, also to Laura Turway and Kelly Reed and to James Graham for their, for their work on this. I think our, our goal in bringing this forward shifted as we did and when we realized the the vast desire from our community to not only have more public art, or I guess public art more readily available to our, to our residents and to our visitors, but also to facilitate ways in which even more public art can be readily available. And so that is why we will be informing the City Commission next week about recruitment for a Arts Commission and looking to support that Arts Commission and hopefully hand, hand us off to them in the very near future. But as as Triest did allude to, it has been a long and winding road. And so the the staff review element was to provide a little bit of, I would say, respite to, to, to folks who are looking to to get their, their pants and their, their hands dirty with some paint. Sorry, that started out very odd, but to paint some murals around town. And so I do understand and here there are concerns about the Arts Commission. But please note, we have, we have heard those and we have actually expedited the the process of getting the Arts Commission going. So rather waiting then from the fall or the winter, we'll be getting that going hopefully here in the next coming week. Thank you, yeah. I guess I will pass it over to Assistant City Attorney character.
Um, thank you. First of all, my apology, my apologies for getting cut off there. I've lost my power at my house at a very inopportune time. So now I'm on my phone and so far, so good. I didn't, didn't drop off intentionally. So um, the, I think the answer to the question, although I didn't hear the question, I heard Laura restate the question. And I think that I don't know if Bill mentioned this, but Oregon has a, has greater protection on free speech than any other state in the nation. And so we have the ability to regulate less than any other state and less than even the Oregon Constitution or the US Constitution would provide. So I, I think that the idea here to, to vet out unsavory or inappropriate murals would be the public process. And the fact that the owner has to consent and that an owner probably would not consent to something so controversial that they would, that would hurt their business or hurt their investment with respect to their building. And then the city has to agree to accept an easement. So there's sort of a, I think, a commitment from all the players as you go through this process that what, what will be proposed might be provocative, but it's not going to be maybe, you know, inappropriate if if there's a difference there. So unfortunately, I can't, I can't give you any more than that. You know, it's one of those, they know, the courts know it when they see it. And when it comes to signs with respect to pornography, and it's sort of the same with signs, but even with the First Amendment in Oregon, there's no pornography exception. That's why we have so many strip clubs here. So um, the, I think, I think that the, the way to get to the content issue, the best we can do with respect to the limitations we have is a public process that encourages participation, that encourages a conversation and partnership between the property owner, the muralist in the city as, as the Arts Commission reviews the application.
The other thing that I would add to that is that the city already allows signs. What this mural section is saying is you can have bigger signs. So the content issue is already in play today because we allow signs and we don't regulate content. That risk is why the City Commission didn't adopt it back in 2015 because we are allowing signs in the right of way and we're kind of opening ourselves up to see what happens. And through that trial period between then and now, seeing if there is a lot of, how, how, how adverse to risk we are. Is it really problematic or not? And it hasn't been in this timeframe. So I just want to acknowledge that the risk is already there today. And then I saw Commissioner Stole's hand up.
Yeah, I just, I had a clarification question that just came up. So it's the property owner, not the occupant or the tenant that that makes the application. Is that how it's written?
The property owner has to sign the latest application, so they might not be the tenant or the business that wants it there, but they still have to sign off on it. Yes.
Okay, well, I think that is an added layer of protection. I believe that the vast majority of commercial properties are not occupied by their owners. So there are certainly a great many of them. So I think that would be another, an extra layer of, you know, of the, if the building's owned by, you know, ABC Property Holdings, it's occupied by, you know, this or that shop, then ABC Property Holdings. if the building's owned by, you know, ABC Property Holdings, it's occupied by, you know, this or that shop, then ABC Property Holdings would be the ones that have to have to consent to that. So I think that's a good extra layer, but a good clarification there.
Okay, was that our last comment on this? No, sorry. Commissioner Mitchell?
Just a quick question for Ms. Richter. I understand that the property owner and the muralist have to agree on the content. And I understand that the city has to grant an agreement, but an easement wouldn't be true that the city could not base that a denial of that easement based on the content?
Yeah, yes, that is correct. We could not.
Thank you.
Mr. Graham?
Hello, everyone. James Graham here, Economic Development Manager, Oregon City. I think this is a great opportunity for Oregon City, and I I'm hoping that we don't overthink this. And I'm hoping that we don't are not so risk adverse that will damage the basically the city. There are times when there are important, there are times when important things come forth that you just have to take the risk. There's no such thing as perfect in any direction. But I think that based on the thoughtfulness that has been provided in this code amendment and all the other associate codes, I think there is sufficient and ample ability to do things in order to do our best to make sure that we don't have the kind of situations that you fear. So I ask that you don't let fear keep you from helping the city and promote the city in ways that it really could help with terrorism, can help with the growth of the community. They're always risking everything we do. So I ask that you boldly go forward and not overthink this because this has been a long time waiting. And a lot of people have given a lot of work. And those issues that you raise will not change. They will always be there. If you're fearful about content, you'll be fearful tomorrow. Those issues won't change anything. But just rest assured that the public process and the other mechanisms that are built in makes it much more unlikely that you'll have what you fear. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Graham. Yeah, you're absolutely right. I know there's fears of everything. There's fears of every development, every proposal. Everything can go south, but I think we've seen in other cities that for the most part these things are beneficial. And the property owners do need to be involved. And I don't think any property owner wants to degrade their property value or keep a business from functioning within the building by, you know, putting something terrible on the side of the building. That's they they got a lot of money invested. They're making money. They're paying taxes. I honestly believe people are probably going to do the right thing. So I've got no problem with this. And I'm not into censorship, so I definitely wouldn't agree on trying to censor it. And I'm hoping, like other people have said, people kind of figured this out before it gets to that point. Property owners, people that are paying for these and people that are going to be putting them up. So I'm okay with with a motion to pass this through. If we have any extra concerns, maybe we could tack that on. But I think the more we tack on, the more we're taking away from from the art. So I'm going to leave it up to if we're, I think if we're done here, I'm going to close the public hearing and and see if we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass this legislation tonight to recommend to send to send to the City Commission that we recommend it.
Okay.
Clarifying Planning File LEG 21-02.
Okay, we got we got a motion by Commissioner Stags to pass LEG 21-02 with no with just what the staff had. We're not tacking anything onto it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I heard a second from Commissioner Gage and a third from Commissioner Stoll. So can we call roll?
I can do that. Commissioner Mitchell?
Well, weighing the risk and the benefit to the city, I will be a reluctant yes.
Commissioner West? You're muted, Commissioner West.
I'm going to vote no because I would like to see the Arts Commission reinstated first. I just think the order of process is wrong. It's just I'm supportive of the mural code. It'll be a great thing for Oregon City. But no.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Stacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoll?
Yes.
And Chair Schlagenhauer?
Yes. Okay. Motion passes. All right. Moving on to, hold on, let me make sure I'm not missing something here. Yeah, okay, agenda item number two. The North End Master Plan for the former Rossman Landfill General Land Use Application 21-000016 MAS, I'm assuming, Master Plan 21-02 CU Conditional Use 21-01 FP guessing floodplain 21-03 and a geo geological 21-030. It is a quasi judicial hearing, so we will begin with the quasi judicial script. One public hearing on land use applications is scheduled tonight. Our role is to conduct a public hearing and to make decisions about the matter before us. And making those decisions, we must apply the applicable codes and laws and cannot vary from or change those laws or codes. Members of the planning commissioner to be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing, I will ask the planning commissioners whether they have any potential conflicts such as family, financial or business relationships with any of the applicants or with regard to the land in question. I will also ask whether any of the planning commissioners have discussed the application in question with any of the parties or have independent knowledge of relevant facts, such as from a visit to the site in question. Any member of the audience may question any planning commissioner about their disclosures. A staff report has been prepared for each application and has been made available to the public seven days before the first public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi judicial hearing procedure that the planning commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the planning commission website. Public testimony will be called on in the order it was requested in advance of the meeting. If you have not emailed city staff at planning@orc.org to request to speak and would like to testify, please do so now before the public hearing, public comment part of the hearing or raise your virtual or physical hand when I ask if there are others in the audience who would like to participate. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name and city of residence. If you would like to receive a copy of the notice of decision, please state your mailing address or email address. Testimony and evidence should be directed towards the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. Any person may submit written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised on the record for the consideration of the City Commission or Luba or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient detail and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond to, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the City Commission or State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient detail to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. All right. Now we will open the record for Oregon City File Number GLUA-2100016 MAS 2102 CU 21-01 FP 21-03 and GEO 21-030. We will now ask every planning commissioner if they have any expert contacts, any conflicts of interest, any bias or any other statement to declare or have visited the site. If there was a site visit, the planning commissioner must declare what he or she perceived. Commissioner Stags, any conflicts of interest? Expartee contacts or any other statement to declare or have visited the site?
I do not have any ex parte contact. I have no conflict of interest. I know the site as many other people do extremely well. And I'm excited to hear about the proposal to develop the property.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Stoll?
No conflicts of interest, no ex parte contact. I drive around the edge of that property almost daily. I did stop to read the sign. It's on the Home Depot, Little Stub Road next to Home Depot, but other than that, no site visit.
Okay, Commissioner West? I'm sorry, any expertise context conflicts of interest, any other statements to declare or have visited the site?
No conflicts of interest, no ex parte contact. I have seen the OCBA presentation of this, but I can listen to this with no bias. And I go to many of many OCBA meetings. I've driven by but not intentionally to look at it. You can't help but driving by it to get in and out of town.
Right. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
No conflict of interest. Like everybody else, I've driven by there countless times, but I did not make a specific site visit for this. I don't believe these are ex parte contacts, but I want to mention them anyway. I did see the presentation that the developers made to the Citizen Involvement Committee. And also, over the years, and I'm sure this is true for all of us, you can't live in Oregon City without having received from other people multiple opinions about what ought to or not to happen on this site. But none of them would had any undue influence on me and wouldn't rise to the level of ex parte contacts. But I think it's important to note that we're not all coming into this thing empty headed.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Gage?
No conflicts of interest, no ex parte contact. Been by the site many times, but not not to view the site in particular.
Okay, thank you. All right, I don't see that I've missed anyone. Okay, as for myself, I have no conflicts of interest. I don't have any bias towards it. I've visited the site many times. I think I've visited the site when I was six. We helped fill the we helped add to the garbage in that site. I go to Home Depot a lot. I've walked on the top of it before, walked my dog up there. I'm I know that I know it well. Hit a lot of balls in the driving range. Ex parte contacts, I did watch the OCBA video, at least part of it. I don't think I watched the entire thing. But I watched part of it. I've seen many discussions online, mostly on Facebook, people talking about it. It's hard to miss. Someone's talking about something about it. And then if you need to know what people are talking about, it's what kind of stores they like. Fears of traffic, typical concerns, nothing that would give me any bias. And that's about what I have to declare on that. Does anybody in the audience wish to question any of the commissioners on any of their comments? Are any hands up? I can't see.
Not seeing any.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Since we have a lot going on, we've added a few things here before the staff report. So I would like to remind everyone, the planning commission is providing additional presentation and comment time due to so much going on. It's complex. It's the size of the application. Instead of 15 minutes, we're going to give 30 minutes to the applicant. Instead of five, we're going to give 10 to a recognized neighborhood association, government agency or other incorporated public interest. Instead of three minutes, we're going to be giving six minutes to individuals. You don't need to speak talk that long, but we're giving you the time in case you you need the time. As I believe Laura said before, we're going to give you a 30 second warning. We don't like cutting people off in the middle of a sentence. So when you keep an eye on Laura, if you see the if you see the sign, that means you got 30 seconds to to finish what you wanted to speak about. All right. And then for the applicant's rebuttal, instead of five minutes, we'll be giving them 10 minutes. But I think we could probably stretch that if there was a lot of concerns that we need to address. All right, comments will be called based on the order that they were submitted, not organized in any manner like for or against. Okay. If you have not filled out a comment card and wish to speak, please email planning@orc.org and provide your name and contact information to be added to the testimony list before the public comment period of the hearing begins for this application. Okay, I'm going to read the names we've got here in case someone thinks they're in it, but they're not. Jerry Herman, Christina Franklin, Gail Yazzalino, Nick Borowski, Renate Mingleberg, Linda Orson, and Karen Mori. Let me know if you have any questions or if someone's not in there, please contact staff immediately.
Goodman has also been added to the list.
As well as Dan Fowler.
Okay. All right, please remind me later. Okay, I got Dan Fowler. What was the one before Dan?
Jeff Goodman.
Jeff. I'm adding it to my list. Okay. I am pretty sure I've already opened the public record on this one. If I haven't, I'm opening the public record. And we will now commence with the staff report. I believe it is Mrs. Christina Robertson Gardner.
Thank you. Chair Schlagenhauer, Planning Commission. I have a general overview of the application at hand. That hopefully lays out kind of the bigger picture framework, and then we'll kind of dive into some details towards the end of my presentation. Uh, let's see, I'm trying to forward. You do advance. There we go. So this evening, we have additional items to enter into the record. On the applicant's end, there is a revised memo with appendices as well as a retaining wall exhibit that shows potential locations of retaining walls that may be larger than the adopted code section. Under public comment, additional public comment came in from Jerry Herman, Dan Fowler, and Christina Franklin. Those items will be attached to the July 12th, 2001 Planning Commission Agenda. The applicant will be requesting a continuation this evening. So all those items will be attached to the next agenda and have been already sent to the planning commission this evening. So an overview of what this application is. So an overview what this application is, this is an application for a master plan, which we call a general development plan. A conditional use and a general review for feasibility of the flood management overlay district and the geologic hazards overlay district. So that's what. All those math C U F P and Geo numbers mean. On the master plan and the applicant is requesting adjustments to for development standards. I've listed them. Block width retaining wall height. Setting of structures, the frontage as well as allowance of elevated external stairways. They have also requested. We've also done initial feasibility review for a phased infrastructure and transportation implementation. So big picture review of infrastructure. Is embedded in this master plan application. Along with that is a conditional use request for the approval of tenant sizes that are larger than. Which larger than sixty thousand square feet, which is a permitted use and several conditional use drive through locations. So next slide, the applicant has provided numerous figures throughout their application, but I've. Place these two on a slide and we may go back to these with questions. On the left is kind of a district map. Some of the conditions of approval refer to districts. If you, the North District is the area fronting Washington Street. The area along the South and Central Districts fronts Abernathy and the connector road. Comes in from where the extension near the Home Depot is through the site and back out towards Abernathy. To the right, you see their proposed open space plan. They provided additional open spaces not required by the zoning code for site plan and design review. And these open spaces will play into some of our additional conditions of approval. And really act as mitigation for the master plan adjustment requests and the conditional use requests. So just to give a little bit of a master plan one oh one, master plans. Are a an option that private development can choose to use. Institutional developments over ten acres need to submit a master plan. But private development can choose to use a master plan process if it's advantageous to them. So what a master plan does is it allows applicant a path of clarity and additional certainty for a multi-phase development proposal. With an approval of a master plan and any any conditions of approval that are added, it gives clear direction for each phase to be reviewed at a D D P level, which is. The staff type two site plan and design review level. The applicant can also choose to vest the code that they applied under for the life of the master plan. In this instance, the applicant is requesting. The ability to use the twenty twenty one municipal code for the life of the implementation, once again, to provide better certainty. And once again, this is an option. The master plan reviews the full build out impact, so both in infrastructure and transportation and can provide phase conditions. Master plan applicants can request site and project specific adjustments. I had mentioned that previously in my other, my previous slide. And really what the the master plan code is looking at is. Can the applicant show that on balance, the resulting project meets the intent of the city code and comprehensive plan policies? And do they proportionally mitigate for any impacts created by the requested adjustments? So we start big picture at the master plan level, kind of give clear direction. And really over the phase of the master plan implementation, which could be two years or twenty years. The applicant comes in through numerous detailed development plan applications on a staff level, a notice type two staff decision. Which is then implemented through individual building permits. I indicated the master plan adjustments the applicant is asking for is. Chapter sixteen twelve, which is looking at specific block width, such as like five hundred and fifty feet. To allow to allow in certain areas additional space between street widths. Chapter seventeen fifty four retaining walls. We have a citywide height limit on retaining walls. And the applicant in certain areas is requesting allowance to have a little bit larger retaining walls because some of the larger slopes. Right at the edge of their property and really the the reality of the landfill cap that is on top. Inside the conditions of approval staff had directed. An exhibit which would be submitted prior to the this evening, identified the locations of those retaining walls. Those have been sent to you and an email today. However, there's still some additional work that needs to be done and I'll talk about that in a future slide. The applicant has also not indicated the max height and location and any potential mitigation. So. I put a blue star on this. This is a little bit of a work in progress, but staff believes we can, we can hopefully get to an agreement on a revised condition of approval. A master plan adjustment C sighting of structures. That all building frontages and percentages are located on public streets or private streets. And meet and. We're in some situations, the applicant is not able to meet the sixty percent frontage proposal. But in most cases they are, so therefore. The adjustment is basically to allow the the. The the road, private street network and footprint that's submitted in the master plan as the siding of structures requirement. And finally, seventeen sixty two oh five oh, which. Allows for elevated external stairways. This is generally written as it relates to residential development because of the. Location of the proposed multifamily and its relationship with the parking garages. To Washington Street, there's some need for some elevated stairways. And I know the applicant is prepared to provide more information and detail and. Staff has found that they have provided adequate mitigation for that request and has provided that in the conditions of approval. The conditional use requested this evening are two things. One is an increase in tenant size for three buildings. We have E two. S two and C two. So staff has recommended building E two to be allowed to be used for a single tenant. Buildings S two and C two still need to have some additional tenant space. They are proposed to be still a mixed use building with more than one tenant. As staff has provided a condition of approval that like the tenant space cannot occupy more than seventy percent. Of the leasable square footage in either the building C two or S two. The applicant has identified additional drive through locations that they have placed on the site. The specific kind of queue analysis and site plan and design review standards will be done at the detailed development plan. With this master planner approval is allows for the general location. To be further pursued and implemented through the the detailed development plan. So staff has recommended that E one, C one and E five. And S one, so these four. Be allowed. Building N one, which is up here is currently not oriented correctly to meet our site plan as these. Site plan and design review standards, which require a direct pedestrian access from a street. So staff is recommending that the drive through location may be approved, but. The applicant has to come in and reorientate the building to meet our site plan and design review frontage standards. And so. Those are built into the conditions of approval. In general, the applicant has put the the conditional use drive throughs at corner intersections. Which allows a direct pedestrian front door to the street and the. The drive through area from the rear side. So it is a good sighting of conditional use drive throughs. The queuing happens inside the parking lot area and not through the private streets. So the applicant has requested, as I said, four modifications as a conditional use. As part of their application, they provided. A design guidelines and those design guidelines were really great, but they had some non-clear and objective standards. And so staff peeled out. Some of the clear and objective standards which were in the design guidelines and identified them as specific conditions of approval. That would need to be implemented in order to receive approval, in order to mitigate the impact of the conditional use. And the modification requests. I have three slides. These go into detail of each mitigation condition. We don't have to go through each one, but in in reality, most of them relate to the open space. Proposal to have both the central square, the vertical park, parklets, pedestrian ways. And multifamily courtyards in the development application as they go through the the each development phase. There is a requirement for additional wayfinding to sites. Just adjacent and a budding the property. So I'm going to go to the next slide. To really emphasize the private street lighting. To utilize decorative banners and flower baskets and just better differentiate it from the drive aisles in a parking lot. And then. Really specifically, the the. The big plaza that is the central square is is really not a requirement from any of the. Master, I mean, any of the open space requirements for multifamily or any of the site plan and design review. And so really that is probably one of the large. Proportional mitigations for this application. And so there is a requirement that. At least no more than fifty percent of the multifamily can be built before that that central plaza square is opened. And finally, there is a pedestrian connection from. The edge of the property down to the end of the Oregon Trail property. To provide connection. So. People who are at the end of the Oregon Trail can walk up through an ADA access ramp to the site or people are at the Amtrak station. Can walk through the end of the Oregon Trail and back up again. This is a little bit of a complicated area because there is some steep slopes right at this corner. And so there's a condition of approval that's been added that is quite long, but it it does really provide flexibility for the applicant to really. Keep working on that final design of the ADA ramp. As the detailed development plans go through, though. Though the ramp must be built before the final occupancy of C two, and that is this building right here. Infrastructure overview. In general, the city sees the internal roads proposed by the applicant to be private roads. With public access and maintenance easements. So while the city may not own them as right away as they are a former. Landfill and it's not in the city's interest to obtain that as right away. The applicant will be designing it to look like a, you know, a regular street and provide both. Public access for maintenance, for access and maintenance. The city is accepting the applicant's private street section, cross sections and locations with conditions. Abernathy and Washington Street, which are really the two abutting right of ways will be built to the adopted standards, city standards, we built. As applicable for the D D P that's in. So if you are, if the applicant is coming in for. Development of the parking garages and the multifamily, they'll be required to upgrade Washington Street with that D D P application. They but they will not need to do what Abernathy until such time that up that portion of the site comes in. And there's just a general feasibility analysis. And conditions were added by our development services, public works, which provides additional direction on future required a detailed development plan items. One, one specific condition is public water line must be looped at first phase of development. The street doesn't necessarily have to be built all the way through, but the public water line is required at the first phase of development to loop the water. There are overlay districts on the site and I want to provide a little bit of overview of the overlay districts. The geologic hazard overlay district and flood management overlay district, the applicant did apply for. Applications for those review. These are really more of a general or general review for feasibility because there was no actual development application this evening. This is just a general master plan. Specific. Conditions and additional review will happen with each detailed development plan. So if 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 a phase has areas within the geologic hazard overlay or the flood overlay district. Or even on the natural resource overlay district, they will be applying with those overlay districts. Reviews at the time of each detailed development plan and the development standards will be applied at that time. The this site is also the natural resource overlay district. The applicant did not request a natural resource overlay with this master plan. They've received kind of further previous direction and they will apply for the natural resource overlay district when applicable. Previous reviews looked at exemption locations such as the soil cap. The area that is the soil cap on top of the former Rusman's landfill is. Really structured fill and and pretty impervious to any vegetative. Plantings and they were able to receive a exemption showing that the soil cap really is. Existing impervious condition and is not subject to the natural resource overlay district. As well as street pavement and Washington Street and Abernathy, which can be run through a simple type one application. There is an existing resource on Washington Street. And at that time that the Washington Street frontage will be improved, the applicant will need to come in. And imply for a natural resource overlay district review and provide any mitigation if there is an impact at that time. One of the big reviews that happened in a master plan, when you look at full built up is a transportation review. John Replinger, our transportation engineer is available this evening to answer any questions. I'm going to provide a little brief overview. The transportation impact analysis identifies that the plan can. Demonstrate that full build out. Sorry, that that T I identifies that full build out can be constructed by twenty twenty five if the identified improvements are completed. Each phase in the development will be reviewed for compliance with the transportation performance measures, which is a volume over capacity ratio. In the regional center, which is a one. One ten ratio. During the D D P review. The applicant is wishing to continue to work with staff to vest some of those trips. It looks like they could potentially build up to eighty percent of their development without triggering improvements to the two start areas. Below, which is the Abernathy Redland intersection and Redland Road two thirteen, which we call jug handle phase two. And so what they'd like to do is to continue to work with staff to provide the data needed to have a revised condition of approval, which. Really clearly lets the applicant know kind of in a sense of trip cap or a vest, you can build. Up to this level of intensity until such time. That either Abernathy Redland Road intersection improvements are made or the Redland Road two thirteen jug handle is completed. I'm sorry, as I mentioned previously, the internal private streets, Abernathy and Washington Streets will be improved at the time of each applicable D D P. And finally, the applicant's initial. Transportation impact analysis find found that ninety nine E at Dunes Drive near the McDonald's. Was faulty at the Saturday P M peak. There's been some additional analysis done and they've submitted. That memo this evening and they find that. That is not the case and therefore can meet the acceptable performance standards of twenty twenty five. To remind everybody that. On Oregon City, we do have performance requirements even for state highways within our regional center. And so even if there is background traffic and the applicant is only providing. You know, their proportional. Contribution to an intersection. If a certain development comes in and it shows that it cannot meet the performance standards, it cannot move forward without those projects being built. So at this time, I'd like to pass it over to John Replinger, our transportation engineer who can provide additional follow up to this slide.
Thank you, Christina. Yeah, this is John Replinger. And I did want to just reiterate a couple of things that Christina mentioned. The analysis focused on the full build out of the facility by year twenty twenty five. And all but two of the intersections are were shown to operate acceptably with full build out. In twenty twenty five. The two intersections that need some additional mitigation are the Abernathy Redland intersection. Have Abernathy Redland Holcomb intersection and Redland two thirteen. Both of these are intersections that we have known about and we do have. Particular projects in the T S P relating to the Redland two thirteen as the the jug handle phase two. And again, as Christina mentioned, the analysis that the applicant is proposing to perform or will be working with staff on. Over the very short time here is to identify how much of the project they can potentially build. Before these. Intersections need to have a mitigation performed for them. And again, as Christina mentioned, there are certain aspects of transportation analysis that will be performed at the D D P level. And these include things like analyzing the site distance at the site driveways along. Washington and Abernathy Street as well as evaluating the queue storage for drive up windows. And some related issues. This is very common with the general development plan being followed by the detailed development plan to work. to work through this in a step by step process. Anyway, I'm available for questions if the commissioners have some later in the in the evening.
Thank you. Just want to also iterate that this presentation is based on full build out in 2025, based on background traffic. If future phases go past 2025, the applicant will be required to submit additional new background traffic. And so really, there are in the conditions of approval do spell out what happens after 2025. So what is not part of this approval? This review is separate from any future urban renewal request. This is a land use review of our master plan submittal. If it is approved, the city is not obligated to participate in any way. What is not part of the this approval, a specific use mix ratio, the applicant has submitted a range of uses. But as conditioned, it's more of an urban design plan that looks at open space mitigation. So all permitted uses in the mixed use downtown district are allowed within the area subject to the master plan conditions. What is not part of the approval is the applicant's design guidelines. They were good in some areas, but not clear and objective enough to allow for a staff level review. So staff has provided an urban design framework plan approach to mitigation, which allows more flexibility in finalizing the tenant mix for the applicant. I kind of like to say, build your proposed open space. Only mitigation items identified in the conditions of approval are required, and they are found to be proportional to the impact presented. Building elevations, three degree renderings, waterculling drawings are not part of the adopted plan. And each phase must meet the municipal code at the time of the detailed development plan for architectural requirements, except for the requested adjustments as conditioned. So there are some outstanding items this evening, and the applicant will be requesting a continuance. One item is transportation. They want to work with staff to provide additional data needed to vest some of the trips in a revised condition to provide more certainty for future tenants. There are still some issues to work through with the wall height limitation. Even if the planning commission approves allowances of additional height and municipal code of 1754, the geologic hazard overlay district has further restrictions. And so even if the planning commission approved a map this evening or next week and identified a maximum height and identified mitigation options, the geologic hazard potentially could further restrict a lot of that. And so the applicant is working with our public works to get a little more clarity and knowing that it's really a general master plan development and not the detailed plan where in a normal geologic hazard, you're actually looking at what's being proposed to see what the conditions would be related to requirements to ensure safety. And finally, the applicant has been working with staff on an additional condition to provide a little bit of more clarity with metrics of ranges and sideboards of the master plan. So specifically, what is being approved in relation to, you know, somewhere within these sideboards in this range, the master plan will allow the following. And that gives kind of really clear direction to understand when something needs to go back in front of the planning commission. So we're working out with the applicant on providing a revised condition with those metrics. So let's see if there's anything left. So what staff direction is by the close of this evening, can planning commission provide staff your questions and clarifications? And what specific items should staff and the applicant respond to at the July 12, 2021 hearing? Staff recommends that the planning commission keep the record open to allow those additional materials to be submitted prior to the July 12 hearing. So I'm available for any planning commission questions, and I can go to specific slides if it is easier.
All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Robertson Gardner. Do we have any questions for Ms. Robertson Gardner or Mr. Riplinger? I'm scrolling through the names. I'm not seeing anything. Am I missing someone?
Commissioner Mitchell just raised his hand, and so did Commissioner Stacks.
Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell.
Well, I have lots of questions, but I I think I think I need to hear from the applicant. Some of them may be answered. A couple of them, Ms. Robertson Gardner already answered in what she said, so understanding that I'd like to be able to ask her questions later on. I'll pass it at this time, but I do want to be able to do that later.
Okay, no, that's a that's a good idea. Laura, did you say to someone else?
I thought Commissioner Stacks may have raised his hand as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm assuming that all the questions we ask now are going to be sort of collected as the questions that Christine mentioned earlier that would be considered as one sort of group of questions. Is that a good assumption?
I think, you know, as the questions move on this evening, if they have not been answered and you think they needs to have additional responses at maybe at a future meeting, or you want staff to come back with additional clarifications, it would be helpful to staff at the time you make your motion. If there's maybe kind of top issues, you would want staff and the applicant to really concentrate on that have not been already answered.
Okay, and I apologize if this gets answered here with the applicant's presentation, but I'll just ask it anyways. Is there a is there a proposed phasing sequence?
Yeah, no, at the this time, there is no proposed phasing sequence. And so staff has provided conditions of approval that could address multiple phases wherever they come in. And this is really to provide flexibility for the applicant as they move forward to to figure out what is the best phase at any one time.
Okay. That's all I have right now.
Okay, I'm going to stop sharing.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't, okay, I got a much better list of people here now. So no other hands up, no more questions for staff before we go to the applicant. Okay, we will now hear from the applicant. Please, I'm going to say, please state your name and city of residence, and we're going to give you 30 minutes. You don't need to speak that long, but if you needed, you've got it. And I'm not sure who we're going to get first.
Yeah, that that would be me, Seth Henderson, Southwest Portland. Good evening, Planning Commission, city staff and community members of Oregon City. As stated, my name is Seth Henderson, and I represent the applicant as the president of Summit Development Group. Not, I'm sorry.
Okay, I was going to say I need to be allowed to share the screen so we can share our presentation. I'm Russell Vishaski with LRS Architects, Portland, Oregon. Can you see the screen?
Perfect, yeah.
Sorry, Seth.
No worries. So as I was stating, I'm not trying to curry favor, but I do want to thank the commission for their selfless efforts on behalf of the community, as well as city staff for their months of working through a very complex application. And the community leaders whose input has helped define, shape and make this general development plan what it is today. And I would go through and thank each and every one of these individuals, and I hope I have in person, but our team has conducted over 60 interviews to get to this plan that we're presenting tonight. Next slide, please. So typically, I would spend about 10 minutes giving background on Summit Development Group, our team, the developments we currently have in process and what we've accomplished to date on the Rusman landfill. But being that we only have 30 minutes to present a pretty complex project and knowing the focus of this land use application hearing is compliance with the municipal code and zoning code, I would simply state that we have previously presented, as stated tonight by a number of individuals to the Citizens Involvement Committee, the Oregon City Business Alliance, as well as the Rotary Club of Clackamas. And those videos are available online for review as you see appropriate. In addition, we're happy to answer any specific questions from the commission as we enter the Q and A portion after the presentation. Next slide, please. So with that, I'd like to introduce Greg Mitchell with LRS Architects and just quickly touch upon the team that you see on the slide before you. So we went out and put together a group of not only firms, but also individuals that we believe are extremely well suited for this challenge. So experience in Oregon City, experience with brownfield projects, experience with significant land use projects, experience working together. And again, it's not just the firms, it's the actual individuals that are staffed. So Kurt Langow of Langow Hansen Architects, Brad Kilby for Planning HHPR, they're also our civil engineer. Eric Orson of Orson Environmental, obviously, that's an important component with the Brownfield site, and he's been involved with that specific site for an extended period of time. And then Phil Worth with Kittleson, who is our transportation engineer. So with that, I'd like to hand it off to Greg Mitchell to go through the details of the project. Thank you.
Next slide, please. Thank you, Seth. Greg Mitchell, Lake Oswego, Oregon. I want to thank Christina for doing an excellent job of setting this all up and really conveying information in a very understandable way. So I'm not going to try to go over a lot of things at the beginning here. And it's also really refreshing that all the exhibits have the site oriented the same way, so we don't have that challenge. I think I want to pause here for just one second to just point a couple of things out. Is that you've seen on the illustrations, the site actually has this finger that if I can do this for you, a little finger out here that's part of the site. It is part of the site, but we, one of our constraints is that we have our N rod, the wetland area. So this boundary here is really important. But all the calculations and everything you'll see based on this master plan exclude that. We only included the buildable areas to make sure that we met all of the metrics for the development code. Another premise to this as well was to follow development code to the greatest extent possible when we're developing this master plan, as well as make it all feasible. Let's not try to do things that we just can't deliver on the promise. Another point that's really important is the into the trail interpretive center and this one little tiny juncture point here where our two sites actually conjoin. So I think Christine actually touched on that is that real all important ADA connection to the into the trail from our site and the vertical challenges and and also the retaining wall situation is a real key here. We have a little sweet spot where those two sites touch each other, and we have an opportunity to make that all happen. But there's a real constraint here, a vertical constraint as well as a property line constraint. Next slide, please. Again, staff did a really good job of touching on the fact that we've broken this whole site down to districts. So it's all understandable for both our team and for the public, as well as everybody we talked to. Again, just to reiterate, you'll hear us talk about basically the north district, all this area in green. And the east district, everything in blue. Our central district, everything in kind of that orange light peach. And our south district, which is everything in that light beige area. You also see illustrations here of all the little keynotes. You'll see that actually in the staff report specific to some of the conditional, the conditions put on the project when you hear like I say, N1. N1 is in north district and is that particular site right there. So that's all for a reference for you, just as we can talk through things in detail of how that district all glues together and where we're where we're talking about. Next slide, please. I think that staff did an excellent job also on touching on a couple of real constraints that we had on this site. One is, we just touched on is this N rod line, which is our buildable, our buildable zone. And you can see that basically that is the boundary, and that will be the extent of the of the buildable area for the site. The other is overlay requirement on the right illustration, which there's a 45 foot height limit within 500 feet of the into the trail interpretive center, which we have illustrated here, the remainder of the site has a 75 foot height limit. Everything we proposed in the mass and densities for the master plan conforms with this with these overlays. Next slide, please. And this is a really important one, and staff did touch on this, but I think this further illustrates the challenges in trying to take care of the flood hazard area on a constrained site. What you see on the left is a similar illustration to what staff just showed you. This is the flood plain boundary delineation that is based off of a elevation datum. The illustration on the right is our approach to mitigating the flood hazard area. What you see in orange here is actually a proposed parking structure. We're going to design the parking structure to actually go into flood. It will be a concrete structure that allow egress and ingress of water floodwaters. There's a certain percentage that we've allocated to that because there's columns and structure and things like that that have to happen. So we are offsetting that. You also see some areas in red. Those are areas where impacting the flood area, and we are balancing that with the blue area. So basically, we're creating flood relief in that blue area to help offset what you see in orange and red in this plant. Next slide, please. Now we're going to get into the the whole gluing of the the master plan together and what informed us. And what you see on the illustration to the left is, and the overriding theme here is, and I think that Christine actually touched on, is a framework plan. So that we we start talking about framework plans. There's framework plans with regards to vehicular transit, pedestrian transit, as well as bike and other types of transit. So it starts to inform us how we're starting to knit all these things together. These are illustrations to help to convey that. What you see in this north district, in this area in red, that is a proposed parking structure. You see the vehicle pathways in red, and those are starting to describe these blocks where in the north district we are more dense and urban, and then you see that we start to break out from that from that grid to tie in the other sections of the site. And then we basically tie the end of the site together. And we allow all of these connections into the site. We are right now showing these major connections into the site, two of which are required of us, this particular north and this particular south, Abernathy to Washington Street. What you see on the illustration to the right is all of the pedestrian pathways throughout the site. Pedestrian connectivity is very important. We were envisioning a very walkable master plan. I think that what's really important to state also is not only we're trying to create a regional center, but just by virtue of adding the 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 housing component of over 500 units to this development, we want it to be a walkable community. And so, you know, quarter mile is usually what we consider a walkable community. So we put strong connections throughout the site, not only for the residents, but everyone that would be entering and being using this particular facility, as well as connectivity directly to those frontages, Abernathy, Washington Street. The challenge on Washington Street, and you see these illustrations in yellow, in bright yellow, speak to those those stairwells and vertical elevator connections. We have about a 30 foot on average vertical elevation gain off Washington to the top of this, we call the Mesa. And so there's a challenge there, and the challenge is that we need to make clear, very clear connections from Washington Street up to the upper Mesa and vice versa, where those people would be traversing from this upper area to Washington Street. So we created these very prominent and understandable locations for that to occur. Again, very key to this plan is this connection to the end of the trail interpretive center. And you can see that, again, what we're talking about where where we, I'll call it the sweet spot, where we have the opportunity to make that connection to the end of the trail. And in this illustration and in other documents that are in the master plan, you'll see not the final design, that's yet to be determined, but you know what it might be, how it might occur. And again, there are some challenges there, but they're not things we cannot overcome. Next slide, please. Another aspect of this design that became very clear to us is, you know, how do we reflect? you know, how do we reflect some of the things that are great about Oregon City? And actually great about a lot of the, of the cities, the really good cities in the Pacific Northwest. And that is the, the scale of some of the, the streetscape. And what you see on the, on the lower right is actually your downtown. I think that's probably like a Saturday market occurring. But you see that the spaces between the buildings, the scale of the buildings, the streetscape. And we tried to emulate that. We thought that was a great aspect of what makes the town great. And that became a genesis of how we organically grew the plan out from that. So we're proposing basically three blocks of main avenue that would be fronted by retail buildings and have wide sidewalks, bike lanes. And basically would be broken into regular block intervals. So basically you would have envisioned, if you will, four-way stops at each one of these intersections where they have intervening streets, much like you would in a down, a really robust downtown. In this, and this was part of the prior slide, you'll see also there's this yellow zone here. That is actually a pedestrian dedicated connection through the middle of the site. And you'll see a different illustration later in, in this presentation. So just some more character here on the right slides. These are from actually, from Oregon City. One's actually from a really great town on the Olympic Peninsula that has some wonderful streetscape. We envisioned that we're going to have the opportunity to create that very robust, you know, edges. And it's those public spaces where people meet and adequacy of sidewalk widths. We're proposing sidewalk widths that are either meet the minimum standard or exceed the minimum standards. This regards, this street exceeds the minimum standards. And we would like to see people occupy those streets and also be able to use those streets in the evenings, it's a restaurants, and you know, extend the hours that the people use and can enjoy those outdoor spaces. Next slide, please. Here's a really good illustration of the pedestrian connectivity and the range of some of these spaces. Is, again, you see these, what I'll call these courtyard elements. These are, these are public courtyard elements between these buildings. This blue is this totally dedicated pedestrian connection. Here was what we have called the like the esplanade or the boulevard here that also connects to the end of the trail interpretive center. And you'll see some illustrations later in the presentation too, that address the connection from the end of the trail through, through the site. But the illustration in the upper, the upper left is basically we envisioned some of these spaces to take on some of these characters, basically some of the scales. Don't take some of this liberals like too urban in some cases, but you know, just the scale of some of the spaces that we envision in the plan. And the idea also in other areas, say down here in this portion of the site, where you have buildings that then separate and there's these wonderful little outdoor dining areas between the buildings that it can occur. And we're creating a full range of those things. You can see them also forecourts for some of these other smaller uses on the site. And as Christina, we'll get into this a little bit more, is the central square. Next slide, please. So the central square, we envision this as a very flexible space that's adaptable over time and uses. These are some of the, just the things that could happen. You know, you could imagine there might be, you know, a band playing in an evening, you know, in the summertime. Could be passive. There might be some seating along some edges around some of these proposed pavilion restaurant areas here. So a full range is a space, but basically this is like a public living room that we envision, you know, the people, the residents, this is a place to gather and meet, also interact with the people that are visiting the center. Another key part of this is good vitality for this public square is the fact that we've given a full range of sizes of buildings, uses throughout the site. We're, we're encouraging from small individual points of service and goods and services, you know, all the way up to anchor to the little monopops that occur in the bottom of some of these mixed-use buildings. So it's really good vitality that you have a 24/7 neighborhood that's developed, which also creates public safety. So envision you have people living in, in this new neighborhood. So there's eyes on the street, there's eyes on the square. People feel safer when you have people that are vested living there. Next slide, please. Another aspect that we, we looked at is there's a, there's a real great calling card for this, this project. And here's what we're trying to embrace, the vertical, the verticality of, of the site. And imagine if you will, approaching this and you see from a 205 or coming down Washington Street is, is what we call the vertical park. And we, we envision a pedestrian connection that traverses this vertical park. And you know, it could, it could pick up some of the characters, something like this. As more of a naturalistic things with stones stacked up and terraces and walkways. And really becomes a celebration of what, what that, that corner of that site is. And again, just repeating the fact that we have these, these areas as overlooks along Washington Street. So those people can actually come out onto these edges and look down onto Washington. And people going along Washington Street can see people and activity up between the buildings. So you're tying those two things together, even though there's elevation separating the two. There's visual connection, there's a real, there's a real gesture there to separate the buildings and create these active zones and a full range of active zones, different scales throughout. Next slide, please. Again, just more illustrations of what, what some of these spaces could be like, like this pedestrian esplanade could be this kind of a character here. Those spaces between the buildings, again, could be this space or this space. Also, we're looking at these connection pieces you'll see on the illustration later of just really celebrating this crossing point and creating some covered outdoor spaces between the buildings. And how you really create these, the spaces between the buildings almost become more important than the buildings themselves. Next slide, please. So again, the, the pretty pictures, and I just want to say, these are visioning. So this just gives the, this gives you the idea of, you know, the sizing, the massing of the buildings, the relationships of the buildings. We're not trying to talk about the character of the architecture at this point. That'll be done through the DDP process. However, what we're trying to convey here is the master plan takes into account for the densities that we are showing in the plan. So for instance, all the buildings you see already relate to the matrix that we put into the master plan to meet the FAR minimum requirements, to meet the minimum and maximum parking requirements. We went through all those steps. And then we tried to not only go through all those steps, but to convey those in something more reality that, that makes sense to people. They understand the spaces and the, and the sizes of these things and how they can relate to each other. So again, you have Washington Street here. You have this vertical park here. You have this main avenue here with the, with the shops lining in them. Potential for entertainment facility here that fronts on this public square here. And then just the nature, the character of the streets. And you can start to see how this frame starts to, to unfold and how this, these pieces tie through. You can see these tree-lined streets that run through and tie into this, this other pedestrian connection through the side. Next slide, please. Here's our illustration of, of Main Avenue with, with the shops lining each side. This enhanced crossing at the, at the mid-block. The character of the width of the streets, the furniture zone, the parking, and how this all starts to feel, what, what that space between the buildings starts to feel like. And what's the, what's the fabric and the texture of the buildings? And what, you know, what's the character building of the street? Next slide, please. And here's the character, it's a little different. So this is, you're moving into the North District and it has obviously a little bit more of an urban feel. But you get, you get a real sense of what that streetscape feels like. And the idea that we have these canopies that, that are over the top of the, of the street and actually protect from sun shade and provide weather protection. And, and the idea of, you know, on-street parking and the, and the furniture zones and that, that idea of the light poles and the street trees. Next slide, please. And here's an illustration along Washington Street. You can see the massing of the buildings, how they fit down over this parking structure. And this is just one idea for these, these kind of terraced stairways coming through there. There are many things that we'll do through this design process in the DDP. And these could change and alter and become a little different. But this just, at least gives you an idea that this, there's a cadence here to this as well, that these come down at regular intervals along this connection on Washington Street. And then there's very, very clear connection points for the vehicles and crossing points for those vehicles that are safe, well-defined and understandable. Next slide, please. And here's an illustration of the square. And this is, this is a really large space. And what you can't really tell, because it's pretty green, is there's actually a pavilion sitting here with a green roof on it. Envision that as a restaurant, there's a companion to that behind this feature tree. But basically these, these pavilion, you can envision that these pavilions could be restaurants with outdoor seating. And that we have the ability, because of the space is so open and non-structured, we have the ability to put band stages or different kinds of events, host different things. To the right is that pedestrian connection that ties all the way through. It also ties between these buildings as well as these streetscapes. So basically, this thing has so many different layers and so many different levels. So you turn corners, you experience different things. You walk into this very large space, you can walk between the buildings into a small space. And then you reopen into this, this long pedestrian esplanade that's framed by buildings on one side. So it's a full range of experiences, building scales, textures, and hardscape, softscape. I mean, it's a very rich environment. Next slide, please. And what, here's one of the things we envisioned, that connector between the buildings. You're looking actually down that one connector. This is running all the way, Washington Street's way down in the, in the past. The prior slide was basically looking kind of towards this thing, this was running through it. Here is that main avenue crossing. And the idea is, you know, the shops can open up and we can see through and we can have activities spill out. And, you know, this being Oregon, it does rain here. And I guess now it is like Arizona, so we need shade. So we think outside cover is very important. So part of the design of this is to create what I call these brisolés or these covered areas between some of these buildings and just really celebrate the outdoors, but provide some, some shelter, some shade for these people to, to occupy that space in inclement weather. Next slide, please. And here's an illustration of that, that esplanade in the, the South and Central District. Really important that we are punctuating these crossing points once again for pedestrians for safety and creating a rich texture along the edges of the site. Next slide. And this will be my final slide. This is the reverse view from Abernathy. You can see that there's a shared use path here. You see these tree-lined streets and pedestrian connections, again, from this side of the site. Here's the end of the trail, right there. This is our North District, right there. At this point, I'm going to turn the, turn the presentation over to Phil Worth to talk about transportation.
Thank you, Greg. Again, my name is Phil Worth, I'm resident of Portland, Oregon. I'm a graduate of Thorabean Gardner Junior High School and Oregon City Senior High School. And over my career, I've always been honored to come and work in Oregon City. And this is yet another opportunity to do so. I know our time is limited, so I'm going to talk pretty quickly because there's one more presenter that follows me. So I wanted to show this slide just as a kind of reminder of where we're coming from and what lies ahead for us. Roughly 10 years ago, the photo on the right represented the transportation system in this area of Oregon City. And we all experienced some pretty tough conditions, especially on Highway 213. A lot of congestion, a lot of vehicles trying to leave from one side to the other. It made it difficult to come into and move around in Oregon City just because of that increase. Along came something called the Jug Handle Project that we're all enjoying now. And it was a major improvement to Highway 213, Washington Street, Blackman River Drive. That's the photograph on the right. The reason for highlighting this project is because not only was I involved in it, but more, much more importantly, the whole development of Oregon City and especially this area of the regional center that we refer to as the Rosman landfill. Full development of that site was anticipated as a part of this project, the Jug Handle Project, being identified and determined to be the appropriate investment to make. So again, the project is on the ground today because of planning that included this development. Next slide, please. You've all had an opportunity. Thank you. You've all had an opportunity, I hope, to review our draft, or our transportation impact study. This slide is meant to just give you a quick highlight of what it was that we were asked to study. And I'll go over some of our key findings in subsequent slides. We were required to scope the project, which we did so with Mr. Replinger and representatives from Oregon Department of Transportation. And, and through that scoping process, made critical decisions of, about a number of things, including the intersections that we'd studied, the periods of time that we would study, the way we would generate and assign trips from the site and so on and so forth. It was determined in that scoping process that we were supposed to look at the typical weekday AMP hour and weekday PM peak hour, as well as the Saturday noon peak hour. And I'll give you a little more information in a few more slides about what intersections we studied. But the short version of that is we studied 25 intersections, as I'm sure you noticed in the report. The bottom part of this slide is really important to emphasize. And so I'm going to go quickly through this. The list of things A through D under number six are what you can expect will be built by the developer as immediate transportation improvements to the, to the entire Oregon City transportation system. The red lines represent site frontage improvements on Washington and Abernathy. They give us motor vehicle lanes, bicycle lanes, on-street parking, planter strips, sidewalks. In the case of Abernathy, the yellow line represents a shared use pathway, which is enhanced pedestrian bicycle facilities that run along the entire site frontage. Going through the site, the blue line that you see is a brand-new collector's street that will be built with city's standards. Built to the standards, continue to be owned by the developer and maintained by the developer in perpetuity. So those costs would never be borne by this, by city residents. And then the two green lines represent enhanced pedestrian bicycle facilities that go through the site. Lastly, on this slide, most importantly, that enhanced pedestrian connection, the orange circle, that creates a connection down to the end of the trail interpretive center. All of these are assets that the city can look forward to as this development unfolds. Next slide, please. This slide is out of your Oregon City Transportation System Plan. What those dots represent are the 21 intersections that were studied as a part of your transportation system plan, which planned for the next 20 years of growth in the city. The next slide, please, shows you the 25 intersections, those blue dots, that were studied as a part of this traffic impact study analysis. You can see the broad distribution of intersections that we examined. And now, next slide. Here are the key findings, again, kind of in rapid-fire fashion here. What we found is first, the multimodal system that's in the area is definitely enhanced by the plans and planned improvements that come with the development. You saw in a pretty extensive study of crash history at all 25 intersections. The final conclusion through that investigation was that there's no direct pattern of crashes that we could identify that would lead to a type of improvement that could be made at these intersections. Something else that we found is, as we looked at existing condition, all of the 25 intersections operate acceptably under all steady conditions. And going all the way to the future with this site fully built out, what we found is 23 of the 25 intersections work acceptably according to city standards. Only two, as Christina and John Replinger both said, only two, Abernathy at Redland and then Redland at 213. and then Redland at 213 are identified to have future deficiencies. And for both of those, we've identified in the impact study mitigation strategies that would bring those intersections into compliance. Once those improvements are made as site develops, and even if these impact mitigations become necessary, the traveling public in Oregon City can be assured that the system will be adequate at full buildout of the site. Next slide. I'll end there and hand it off to Kristy White.
Thank you, Phil. This is Kristy White. I'm land use counsel for the applicant and reside in Portland, Oregon. I'm going to go through a few of the conditions of approval and our discussions with staff and our request for modification of some of these. But first, I'd like to say that there's nearly, I think, 81 conditions of approval. And we only need to really further discuss a handful or nine of them. And I think that's a very strong start. So the first one is condition 10B1. This is the condition Christina spoke about that pertains to that required split in two of the larger format store pads, S2 and E2. Staff has proposed a condition that they would like no single tenant to occupy more than 70% of those buildings on those pads. And what we are requesting is to move that threshold to 85%. Why are we asking this? Well, first, there's no code requirement for the split in retail tenant percentage in this case. So this is a discretionary move. And we think the discretion here should move us up to 85%. We moved from 100% to 85% by creating some shallow depth retail options along each of S2 and E2 frontage. But we need to maintain the balance of that square footage to accommodate these larger format users. There was, all of those uses, as Christina spoke about very clearly, are approved in the general development plan. But then they have to go through the subsequent DDP where they'll be reviewed for conformance with the objective design standards, the open space requirements, the street frontages. And that'll happen in each successive DDP. So we're quite certain that there will be compliance measurements all along the way, even if we move these to 85%. And importantly, the Downtown Business Association, in reviewing this proposal, indicated support for this approach of large format retail, especially because these are the kinds of uses that can't be accommodated downtown. And so by putting them out here, we have reduced competition and enhanced cooperation between different retailers in downtown versus out on this site. This is a tough site. There's no question about it. And we're asking for this flexibility to try to make this work and would really appreciate moving from 70% to 85%. That 85% is also consistent with all the open space standards, the street standards, the FAR calculations. I'll move on to 11A. I can make short work of this one. Christina already spoke very clearly about it already. It's the N1 drive-through pad. We think we can work with the tenant prior to the next hearing and actually conform that design to the standards that are mentioned in the condition. So we're just going to bookmark this one and hopefully come back and get GDP approval rather than a condition for that redesigned N1 pad. 13A, this is the condition that pertains to thresholds of change that would trigger a GDP amendment rather than allowing us just to go through DDP. I think Christina's made a very good suggestion here that we haven't identified a path to accomplish some flexibility by setting up sideboards and ranges that as long as we operate within, we'd still be coming back for a Type 2 DDP instead of a GDP conceptual amendment. And we agree with that approach and we'll work hard to get that resolved before the next hearing. The next one that's pretty important is the parking lot exception. Here, we didn't get a long chance to talk about this one. And so I feel encouraged that between now and the next hearing, we can resolve this one too. The development, as you saw, is proposed in districts. And with one exception, each of these districts will stay within their minimum and maximum parking ratios, especially the maximum parking allowance. There's one exception, and it's District E. And the reason for that is parking is calculated on a site-wide basis. So at one time, if District E builds in a certain phase, District D would have 40% more parking than it would be permitted, but not more than the entire site would be permitted. So there might be a limited period of time for about a year, based on the build-out plan, where we might be exceeding the maximum by 40% in District E. And we'd like the the flexibility to be able to do that. The the flexibility is important because we can't really build half a parking lot efficiently or economically. And because this is site-wide, there's infrastructure, there's utilities, there's landscaping, there's stormwater, that's all integrated in that parking lot. And it would be very, very difficult to stop half of that and not build out the entire just because we have about maybe what could amount to a year gap in that maximum parking allowance. So given the limited time, we'd really like consideration of going from 25% to the 40%. Then there's a condition 30. Condition 30 pertains to some street cross-sections. The plan in our planning process has been for 80-foot right-of-bays to match the 80-foot right-of-way of the connecting stub street. There's been discussion lately that this should be 87 feet. We feel pretty confident that we can put all of the required improvements, ped, bike, car, within the 80-foot. And this is one of those conditions that even was discussed today and will continue to be discussed before our next hearing in July. I just want to bookmark that one, that it's an important condition to resolve before we come back at you in July. Perhaps maybe the most important and the most complex is the condition that Christina already alerted to you alerted you to regarding retaining laws. So this is, there's obviously a significant vertical condition on this property because of the man-made slopes, landfill and protective cap. So under Code Section 17.44, staff imposes height and terrace requirements for the retaining walls in order to protect and conform with geotechnical hazard standards. Now, as a reminder, this isn't a natural condition out here. It is a condition that was man-made and has a remedial protective cap regulated by the DQ to avoid disturbance of hazardous materials. So the standard code retaining wall requirement in 1744 won't really work on this site. We have too much verticality, we have too much man-made slope. Instead, we have designed a concept wall that will meet the geo-tech requirements without penetrating the cap or exposing hazardous materials. If we had to conform with the letter of the code in this case, we would have to terrace and minimize height. That would require us to go into the cap. And we really must stay away from that kind of action. 1744-110, the city engineer determines, based on a site-specific study, whether the proposal constitutes a hazard. We feel confident that our proposal in the GDP and in future DDPs will emerge with a solution that meets that standard and that doesn't create a hazard. What we're engineering here is safer and better than the current condition. So what we really need to do with this particular condition is roll up our sleeves with staff and take the time to really understand what the concern is, how we can build around that concern and be sure staff is comfortable with the proposal under the geo-tech. So I just want to emphasize that this is, this is one of the big issues that we'll have to resolve before the next hearing, hopefully. Condition 77, we just have some clarifying language that doesn't change the substance of that proposal. And I will forward that into the record. On condition 78, this is D Street. We can work with the standards that are proposed under this condition and we'll conform this street section to the requested street section in the condition and then bring that back. So that's approved in the GDP and doesn't have to await a future DDP. And then I'll end with condition 79, which of course is another really important condition. This is the TIA. So both Christina and Phil and the city's traffic consultant, I think, explained all of this very well. The comprehensive traffic impact analysis we submitted into the record shows what transportation facilities are impacted by full buildout of this proposal by studying those 25 intersections. It identified two that need mitigation at some point in the trip generation from this site. And we heard earlier that point might be around 80%. So what we would like to propose is a condition of approval, and it was referenced by Christina and your traffic consultant, that requires a little further work where we're going to actually tether the transportation improvement or mitigation measure to the threshold for trips that starts to impact that intersection so that we can vest these trips and provide certainty to the community, the city, as well as the applicant as to when those mitigation measures will be required, when they will be installed, and that they will be installed concurrent with the trips that are creating that that impact. That's just going to take a little more work. I think we have just been fabulous collaboration on this particular point. And we think it's a better approach to actually use the TIA and the value of this TIA to tether those mitigations to trips. So we all know what we're talking about as square footage is developed on this site and transportation improvements are installed. To the extent those mitigation measures require ODOT approval, we know we'll be subject to that approval and we'll have to go seek that approval. So with that, I hope I didn't talk too fast, but I didn't want to go over our time allocation. And we, of course, will be available for any questions.
Right, thank you very much. I hate to put the brakes on this, but is there any way we could take a five-minute break for refreshments and take care of anything we need to take care of?
And then Chair Schlegenhoffer, one more request is because it's 9:33 and we have the 10 o'clock limit, though the commission can extend it to 11:00. Did you want to do that now before the break so people know if they should hang on for public testimony or not?
Sure, that way they know how many refreshments to bring to the table. Yeah, let's, let's do that.
So as long as there's a majority of planning commission that is willing to extend it, you can extend it up to 11:00 PM.
Okay, let's see if we want to extend it to 11:00 and let's take a vote.
Would you like me to call? Commissioner West?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoll? Commissioner Gage?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell? Commissioner Staggs?
Yes.
And Chair Schlegenhoffer?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you.
So when will we start up again? Five minutes? Is that agreeable?
That's great.
All right.
All right, I will pause the recording and we'll meet you back here at 9:40.
We're just chit-chatting. Okay, so I believe we were done hearing from the applicant. So now it's time to ask applicants some questions, any of the clarifications we want before we listen from, before we hear from the public. So any questions, please raise your hand. Please help me out with that. I almost see the short list here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Commissioner Mitchell, I see.
Okay, so the applicants are here to answer questions, right? The first question I have is, in our mixed use downtown zoning and in the GDP application that that they put forth, both of those talk about encouraging office and residential above-retail uses. And I'm a bit concerned and wondering why they are not proposing that. This, you know, when I, when I first look at this, it's, yes, it's a mixed-use plan when you look at the whole site, but it, but it's kind of like the thing's got put in the salad bowl and they forgot to toss the salad. All of the residential is in one area, all of the retail is essentially in another, at least the big box retail. And then there's another section of retail, but there isn't any, there isn't any intermixing. And that's something that is encouraged in our mixed-use development code. And, and they mentioned it in their plan. And I'm wondering why that wasn't a part of their plan.
Greg, did you want me to take this one?
Yeah, why don't you try the first swipe at it? Okay. I'll try to assist as I can.
Yeah, so the way that I interpret the code is that you are looking at mixed uses across the entire site. So that is what we are currently providing. In addition, all of those residential buildings, the the first floors are predominantly retail as well. So creating, creating that retail throughout those blocks where those five buildings are, which are residential.
Okay, thank you. I don't, I don't, I don't agree with you with what the code says. It, it says, and it says encourage. I will, I will admit, it says encourage retail above. And also, I will say that I did not realize that the ground floor in those residential buildings where it was dedicated to retail, I don't recall seeing that anywhere in there. So I think that's good. Thank you for clarifying that. Just a general question, and, and this is something that I'm really struggling with regarding the phasing. So there's sort of a central feature in each of the zones, whether it be a big box retail space or whether it be the residential. One of those is going to come first. What does, what does, what does the whole site and what does the district that that first item is in, what does that look like as you build that first key part in terms of roads, parking, Market Street all the way through the site? And I, and I know you're, you can't respond to which one's going to come first because that's going to depend on, you know, who steps up first and wants to come in. But is it, is it district by district? And what is the rest of the site and what does that district look like as the first one comes online?
Great question. So the way that I see this being executed is first and foremost, we have to address the infrastructure throughout the site. So we have the methane gas mitigation system that pretty much has to go underneath all the hardscape. We have the utilities that need to connect from Washington to Abernathy. And those utilities are going to have to be on piles. You have the parking garage off Washington, which is the podium where probably two-thirds to a half of the north district is built on top of that. So, so there are some components that very logically have to be addressed first. So that, the first phase I see being, and ideally, we're also doing a lot of the off-site infrastructure. So if we're putting in a new, new control light, traffic light at where Abernathy and the main avenue connects, those types of things, you don't want to be doing right in the middle of trying to open space in other areas on the site. So I see the first phase being that we're setting up the canvas for all the rest of the build-outs. As far as the multifamily is concerned, we anticipate that we will execute that ourselves with a separate entity. The entertainment area, I can't tell you today which components of entertainment are going to rebound after COVID faster than others. So our cinemas open, go-kart, arcade, bowling. So we're going to be talking to and have had conversations with a number of potential tenants. And it's really who, who, who is going to open first? For, so that's the, the big entertainment building there. We're in conversations with a number of anchor tenants. And we're trying to figure out which ones best work together. We're having conversations with Liz Hannam with the Downtown and talking about what, what businesses are currently downtown. What should we be curating for ours so that the two augment one another and not compete? So it's, it's, it's going to be a long. Um, so it's, 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 it's going to be a long and thorough process. I would say that um, I would hope that a lot of the North District, once we get that podium built. A lot of the North District could open at once. That seems to make sense. There are a number of uses that any of those three buildings, um, the larger format buildings could also be. So people, people have heard about a water park and so there's a question of is that, is that financially feasible, right? Um, we currently do not have any office in our plan. Uh, Christina, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe office is a allowed use uh within the mixed-use downtown, yeah?
Correct.
So if, if we're going for a true mixed-use downtown, it seems like we should add a little bit of office. At the same time, I want to be really sensitive to the fact that once the courthouse moves, there's going to be a lot of empty office downtown. So it, it's trying to balance all of those things and um. I, I don't know if I've, I've answered your question fully. A lot of it's going to be reacting to what is occurring in the overall market. Does that help at all?
Yeah, that, that helped quite a bit. Um. And, and I think just a, as a smart business person, it makes sense that. The whatever you're build, you're going to build the parking in the streets and so forth and able, in a, for people to be able to get in and out of, you know, park, get to the business. And so forth. I, I, I just don't want it. You know, I, I know that your, your development window, you know, you're talking five years, but. You know, who knows? That, that may be overly optimistic and I don't want to have something that feels. You know, but everywhere feels like a construction zone the whole time. And if, and if you're doing it zone by zone, I, I think that helps it a lot.
Um. Can I interrupt quickly?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, so a lot of the, a lot of the stronger brands that we're talking to. In their leases, they have conditions where if there isn't a certain occupancy level across the entire site, they're not paying rent. So, so we are motivated to make sure that there's a consistency in the build-out. There's a momentum. And the way that we're currently looking at it is if we can start um sometime next spring, early summer. And you think about the longest duration, which is probably going to be the parking garage plus the residential on top of that. So longest construction duration of any item. Our plan is to be done by the end of twenty twenty-four. And, and that is aggressive and that is going to take a lot of work. But we have, we have the team on board. It all comes down to can we get the same momentum with retail tenants? And office tenants and entertainment tenants to get there. But that is our goal.
Okay, thank you. Um, one more. I think this is one more question. Um, when you showed the slides of, of the pedestrian way. Uh, and you're around buildings, I think it's, where's, where's, where's one of my piles of paper here? Uh. And three, four, five, yeah, yeah, in that area. I love that. Where I have a problem is when you get on the other side of Market Street. And people walking down to. The anchor tenant buildings, the large, the large retail. And I would really love something much more along the lines of what we just saw in that slide. Extending on down, whether it be partially covered, whether it be uh more bump outs. Um, now I realize it's a wide sidewalk, but it, it's a wide sidewalk with, with um ninety-degree parking on, on both sides of it and not a lot going on. And it's quite a lot of expanse. And I, I think, I think a lot more should be done to, to tie the two portions there together. Um, by something more like what you showed in the slide a minute ago. Throughout that distance across all that parking lot to make that more attractive for people. As, as they move along there. And that, I, I don't know if that's something, I, I still have a little bit of a puzzle about exactly what has to be in the master plan and what's done later with it, with the DDP. Um, but that to me, I, I think you could really um. It improve the way the sites tied together for pedestrians by improving that. Um, and then I guess I do have, have one more thing. In that three-block area. Uh, will all of those intersections be raised for pedestrians? Uh, to make it, make them safer for pedestrians. I know, I think you talked about the one that, that's the actual dedicated pedestrian street. But I'm wondering about the cross, um, would that be like second, third and fourth street or second and third streets at least? Whether those would be raised. And then I also wonder about the necessity or desirability of, of on-street parking. In uh, in that two or three-block section. Uh, and I think you'd make it less car-focused and more pedestrian-focused. If you didn't have Aron Street parking in that area. And we haven't talked about parking, but I know you're above the minimum by several hundred spaces. Uh, where it is now. So I think you could, you could stand to lose those spaces and, and end up with a more pedestrian-friendly. Um, cross-section in that two or three-block area there. And I'll, I'll stop there.
Did, did you want us to respond to some of those comments or?
At some point.
Okay, so um, I would say Kurt, did you want to talk a little bit about which you see that connection being? From the Main Avenue to the retail?
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate um your comments because we've had the, the same discussion about um. Providing coverings, uh, trellises and really make it less as the, the quickest point between A and B. But really have this kind of experience kind of unfold uh with, with, with benches. Um, uh, artwork, um, certainly uh canopy trees. And also providing a buffer because we know that we do have parking on, on either side. So. Still providing kind of a safe access as you make your way from um, the, the northern end to some of the other uh areas of the site. But uh, really make it very pedestrian friendly um, as much as we can, certainly lighting, um, seating. Um, so those are all things that we've talked about and certainly as, as we move forward, uh, begin to think more about the details.
Um, Ski, Greg, Phil, could one of you speak to uh the raised pedestrian crossings?
I'd be happy to, Seth. Yeah, again, Phil Worth. Your notion of uh raised intersections, bringing them all up to the top of sidewalk. Um, is something that we've already discussed. We're very open and enthusiastic about treatments like that that really. Um, highlight the fact that this entire area is meant to be pedestrian-oriented. So uh, to the extent that the code and standards allow, we would pursue treatments exactly like that.
And, and Phil, in regards to the street parking along the Main Avenue? I mean, it, that, that corresponds with the TSP requirements and the typical city street section, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, in fact, we uh, early on in, in, in our pre-op, sorry, this is Russell with LRS. Uh, we discussed not showing parking at that and we were discouraged by staff because it's not a standard street. Uh, and they wanted to see parking along there because we did show it just the minimum drive aisle because we did want to make it super pedestrian and this has been the. What you're seeing now is kind of the collaborative process to coming to a place of. Giving the city what they've asked of us uh as staff and meeting those kind of standard cross-sections and trying to make it as pedestrian-friendly and walkable as possible.
Yeah, thank you for that, but I, I guess what I'd say to that, uh, one of the cross-sections. On Market Street, Section One, and I'm not sure which end of the Development Section One is in. But that shows a turn lane that does not throw on-street parking. So. Now, now we're going to have, I, I, I don't understand why, uh, and maybe this is something that staff is going to have to look at. Um, on-street parking and part of that street and, and not on the other part? You know, so what?
So that, that section, and I, and I can point out here with my, let's see where's control. Uh, so, so Section One is here and that's the extension of the north-south stub that already exists. And so we're maintaining that extension from the, where it exists up to the first intersection and that's why we're showing it. Hey, it exists here, it's at a weird angle, so it'd be awkward to try to provide parking. And then as soon as we're in our site, then we're providing what, what we think is appropriate for the site.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other comments unless I'm missing one. Am I missing one?
You are not and Chair Schlagenhoffer, because of the late hour, we did have a request for one of the public um comments to go first. Um, just because of the late hour and that was from Christina Franklin.
Okay, uh, can, could she, could we take her comment and then I ask a couple more questions? For the um applicant?
It's up to you.
Okay, because I have a couple, I have a couple of quick ones and I don't, I don't, I don't need a whole lot of response from them, so. Bust through those real quick, uh, we could be done with that. Okay, I had a couple of seeds to plant. Uh, the first one, the connection to the interpretive center. I know there's some geological, not geological, there's some elevation uh challenges there. What about an elevator? Something that looks like uh our original elevator. Anyways, maybe a dumb question, uh, maybe. It's too early and maybe it's not our realm to talk about it, but there's just something that just popped up. And then another thing, I've seen a lot of roofs. And I know that there's, um, we can't do a lot of green things there just because of the, the ground, it's uh, it's sealed. We can't, we can't put permeable pavement in there. But I'm seeing a lot of roofs, I'm seeing a lot of flat areas. What about solar? I don't see anything as far as any kind of green energies being discussed. It may be too early, so maybe we just disregard all this. But I do see a lot of chances for solar panels, a solar farm. I see hundreds of thousands of square feet and. Do you have any intention of providing electrical vehicle parking, especially for tenants? Which that's a big concern for tenants, they rent the place, they cannot install anything like that, so. Um, you don't need to respond to that now, we can go into public comments, but those are just a couple of things that I would like to leave you with. And with that being said. Let's uh, Laura, I already forgot her name, I'm sorry. It's, I've been here a long time. Uh, what was the? The first person that wanted to speak?
Christina Franklin.
Okay. Thank you, Christina Franklin, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, you have six minutes and please state your, your name and city of residence and make sure you're not muted. I hope she's still there. Laura, what would you like to do? Would you like to skip to the next person and uh, or keep waiting?
Um, I just noticed Christina Franklin just unmuted herself.
I'm, I'm trying to find the right microphone. Is this one?
Okay, we can hear you.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I'm not using my normal computer and I set everything up ahead of time, but it didn't work. Okay, uh, I wanted to thank you. I'm Christina Franklin. I um live in Oregon City in the Barclay Hills neighborhood. And I wanted to thank the uh planning commissioners who've put emphasis on pedestrian safety because that is really. Uh, the biggest thing that I wanted to discuss. And I submitted writ, a written statement as well. Um, one of my. Big concerns, I think there almost seems to be two halves to this development. There's the north. Uh, what they're calling the north development. And then there's the rest of it where the um. It's basically what I think of as a glorified strip mall. And uh, you can put lipstick on a strip mall pig, but it's still going to be a strip mall. And strip malls are just inherently not pedestrian-friendly in any way, shape or form. Especially when you put drive-throughs and they're um requesting five different conditional uses for five different drive-throughs. And, you know, drive-through equals cars, cars do not equal pedestrian-friendly. So I, I'm very concerned about that aspect of the, of the plan. I would like to see a lot more. Emphasis on pedestrian-friendly actually being pedestrian-friendly. Pedestrian-friendly does not mean car culture, strip mall culture. And that's, that's kind of the basis of my, of my concerns. I also wanted to bring up. Uh, the TriMet problem. There are currently only two TriMet lines that um are accessed to the site. One of them is weekday only and wait times are about an hour. The other one, wait times are about forty minutes. And for this many people living at that site, that really does not feel adequate to me. And I'm hoping that somebody is talking to TriMet right now rather than um, you know, ten years from now. To try to get more TriMet access to the site. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have someone that can answer that question about TriMet, the increase in capacity in a case where a, a large development like this occurs?
Uh, I can provide a real quick overview. Uh, you know, TriMet is a separate entity, uh, and we can't compel TriMet to uh condition a uh. A stop, to be put in a particular phase, but we are, they are aware of the project and. Uh, as, as each detailed development plan comes in. Uh, and for them, it's really, once the rooftops are built. Or once the development is built, they can look at extending their line. And so until, you know, they're very cautious about when they're committing to a new stop. And so it's that collaboration conversation at each detailed development plan. Um, is really where we're at in regards to TriMet, but they are aware of this project. And uh, we have indicated that we want to work with them to get a TriMet stop somewhere on this project within the interior of the project.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Alright, I'm going to ask you the same question I've asked a few times now. Is Jerry Herman still with us? I don't see him. I don't want to skip him if he showed back up.
Hello, I'm Jerry Herman's here.
Oh, awesome. Okay, thank you, Jerry. Uh, your name and city of residence?
Okay, I'm Jerry Herman. I'm uh, resident of Gladstone and I'm here in behalf of Rivers of Life Center, my nonprofit. The reason I want to make some comments, I'm going to do, do this in five and a half minutes. You time me. One, I've been involved in three major shopping centers in my life as an environmental activist. Now, why I did that, I don't know. Two of them are in your city. One of them is called Berry Hill Shopping Center. The other one is called South Ridge Shopping Center. And another one, built by Helman Properties, is called Milwaukee Marketplace. All of them are in close to a hundred acres in size. When I was involved in those things, I was asked as the token environmentalist, so to speak, to give them some comments on how they could soften the effects of their developments. And I watched the private sector go to work to solve problems. At South Ridge Shopping Center. Up in Oregon City, there's an observatory at our environmental center that we built. It wasn't going to work with that shopping center without down-directed lighting and other buffers. Those folks went to bat and got those things done. At uh, South Ridge Shopping Center drainage from Fred Meyer, almost a hundred acres of land. Goes underground into large storage pipes and is metered out through one eight-inch pipe into Newell Creek. In other words, they saw the impacts to Newell Creek. At Milwaukee Marketplace in Milwaukee, that eighty, eighty acre site had a, a very important stream. And, and uh wetland complex called Mentorm Creek and Mentorm Springs. That was all celebrated there and saved because we asked that they make changes. Why am I telling you this? Because I feel this development is the first time that the developers are really listening to people. The previous development ideas were Army, Navy and the National Guard, I believe, showed up to put pressure on the officials. Way back when. I'm not going to say who that developer was, but it was a much different type of operation at that time. Some people talk about. Some people talk about the problems of this landfill. There's not one landfill. Come on, there's two landfills. Rossman's one sits very close to Clackamas Cove. It's dug deeper than the Clackamas River. It contributes leachate to not only the Clackamas, but also to Clackamas Cove. If you think I'm insensitive to water quality issues, I'm very concerned about water quality issues because Clackamas Cove is this beautiful diamond that could evolve even better than it is now. It's already beautiful. It could be a wonderful thing. But that Rossman's one landfill first receives the leachate from Rossman's two, the development area we're talking about. The two contribute to a problem, but the real problem is Rossman's one is deeper than the Clackamas River. We need to deal with that. Why am I saying this? There's no overall plan for the North End District. We got a North End project is the title of it, but the North End District is where the pioneers settled Hyrum Strait. wagon train of 1853, we think everybody settled in downtown Oregon City. No, they came to Abernathy Green. They took advantage of the huge foraging activities and hunting and fishing that they could do at the Clackamas and Willamette. Then they spread out to settle the various hillsides in Holcomb and then of course, the upper parts of Oregon City. Why am I going into this point? My point is, I think this development can be a key to those kind of attitudes beginning to be properly celebrated in this area. There is an easy way to create a riparian forest on the east side of this development. It doesn't have to be just a wetland. That's good. It can be a riparian forest like it was. On the west side of this development, next to I-205, there are 12 acres of wetlands. And if ever anybody says anything more about the jug handle, those are lifelands, those wetlands. It sounds like we're running a brewing operation down there. In fact, those wetlands are underdeveloped for trails and accessways. It could all be a part of the impetus from this project at Rossman's two to celebrate those areas, including direct connections to Clackamas Cove. So I gave you a two page, a three page document that has talked about some things that are important. The one thing I think is really important is this development group has decided to work with DEQ and establish a 30 year mitigation and management fund, not just mitigation, I should say, a trust fund to hold the public trust above all, put money into it from the very beginning of this project and maintain the water quality, the methane issues that you've heard about that have to be in the long term managed. This is the first time that the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality or any department in our nation has done this kind of thing. And they're doing it in partnership with this group. So I want to conclude by saying, take a look at what I sent you because there's more than I can talk about. I'm going to come back. I intend to come back in July with some other folks to give you some ideas, but we need to emphasize that there's possibilities because of this development moving forward. There's also opportunities that are not being taken advantage of. I heard all this discussion about walls. How about carbon walls that store carbon? That is so important right now. There's a way to do that with vegetation and large woody materials. Why can't we approach a whole bunch of things, make this the showcase project for Oregon, if not Oregon City? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. I swear I'm not trying to minimize your your concerns, but in an effort to try to get through everybody, we're going to have to move on. I do appreciate all your input. And you had some great, great thoughts there. So we hope to see you again soon. All right, Mrs. Gail, yes, Alina. I hope I didn't ruin that too bad.
Okay, hello, I'm an Oregon City resident and I work at the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive and Visitor Information Center. And I was going to say different things, but right now I want to say that I'm very impressed and excited about this development for Oregon City. The north end and then with the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron on the south end of Main Street. We have a lot of possibilities and I'm very excited about this economic development. And we get visitors from all over and having more in our city for different people and age groups is very, very important. And being in our backyard, it's it's going to be tremendous. Our people, we have people from Germany that come and now they'll be able to stay. There's so much more they can do. I think it'll help keep people here longer and we'll get some more hotels, things like that. So I'm excited about this. I also want to say that I've been to several Zoom meetings and have attended some presentations from Summit Development. And I'm very impressed with how they are engaged and listening and watching you all tonight work together. I'm very much comforted in knowing that I think something's going to happen, something good. So thank you.
Thank you, Gail. We appreciate you taking your time and spending, you know, waiting so long to provide your testimony. We apologize that it got so late, but there was a lot of information to go through. And we're excited about it as you are. We're just trying to make sure it all goes right.
Yes. On you.
Thank you again. All right, Mr. Nick Veroski.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you very much. I'm speaking on behalf and hope that you will approve this project. The planning commission is the first step in the transformation of the Rossman landfill from environmental wasteland and economic blight into an economic powerhouse for Oregon City's North End. The developers provided solutions to each and every aspect of the comprehensive plan goals and policies. Furthermore, the project envisioned by Summit Development offers a solution to the environmental problems that have plagued the water aquifer under and the rivers near the landfill for years. And the development will create economic opportunities that will benefit the region for many years to come. Summit Development has expressed a true desire to connect the North End with downtown. The housing component alone will create with over 550 dwellings will create in excess of 1,000 new customers for downtown Oregon City businesses just a few minutes away. And for the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center right next door. The likely assessed value upon completion will be over $300 million, creating property tax revenue in excess of $5 million annually. An incredible benefit for Oregon City's schools, police, fire and other districts. As the benefits of this project are great, the risks of losing the project are perhaps even greater. Consider that the land has sat vacant, leaching landfill contaminants into the water systems, generating no economic benefit and paying only $30,000 in property taxes since Fred Bruning left Oregon City and took Cabela's to Tuolleton after being denied the river center in 2012. The question, can Oregon City get the big projects done? Became an issue in seeking state funding for the Willamette Falls Riverwalk. As a downtown Oregon City property owner and business owner, I ask you, please send this message to the state, to Metro and to the investment community. Yes, Oregon City can get the big projects done. Please approve this projects and I thank you. And I admitted, I am a not a resident of Oregon City. I live in unincorporated Washington County. My name is Nick Veroski and I hope you approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Veroski. Okay, next up we have Mrs. Renata Mangleburg.
Thank you. My name is Renata Mangleburg and I'm an Oregon City resident and live in the McLaughlin neighborhood. Thank you for the opportunity to enthusiastically support their North End Master Plan by Summit Development. This is a significant project that will meet many of Oregon City's needs. We have waited over a decade for a second development proposal on this promising yet challenging site. There are many reasons to approve this project. For one, the project exceeds the vision of the mixed use downtown zoning designation on this large site at the northwest northern gateway of our city. There is an impressive variety of outright permitted uses. The summit time has taken the time to thoroughly understand what the city requires and to meet them. They propose 500 badly needed or 550 badly needed housing units, small and large scale retail spaces, restaurants, entertainment options, significant onsite parking and pedestrian amenities. This mix will maximize the potential of this large visible and strategically located site. It will become a major magnet for Oregon City residents and visitors from surrounding areas. The proposed main avenue, public courtyards and connections to the end of the Oregon Trail, public art and more will complement the feel of our downtown. I'm impressed with the team's approach to traffic challenges. Any large scale development will generate significant traffic. They propose improvements to Washington and Abernathy Streets and well-planned internal circulation that connects to the community. The site is well-served by many directions from Highway 213 to Abernathy Road, Washington, TriMet bus lines and even Amtrak rail. The mix of housing and commercial units will generate trips at different times of the day, different days of the week. That will help even out the traffic flow. The developer and this traffic, city traffic engineers will find effective mitigation strategies to address major concerns. The development team has a sophisticated knowledgeable approach to longstanding environmental challenges. The support letter from the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality highlights their partnership approach to finding the best solutions. The most effective way to deal with environmental challenges on a large site is to work with one is to work at it at one time with one knowledgeable developer. A piecemeal approach on site by site basis will take longer and might not completely solve the problem. This development will bring huge economic advantages to Oregon City. It will bring about 1,000 jobs and bring new businesses and attractions. The 550 multifamily housing units will attract ongoing customers, tourists, diners that will support downtown as well and our local businesses. The developer understands Oregon City's needs and wants and is working to find the right tenant mix to meet them. For these reasons and more, I urge your support of this compelling project. I'm not alone. Over 300 residents have signed a petition supporting this development. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mangleburg. We appreciate your time. Mrs. Linda Orson. I hope that was right.
I'm not seeing Ms. Orson on the Zoom.
Okay, you think we lost her? Okay, all right. I apologize for that. It is getting late. Mrs. Karen Moore.
That's Ms. And staff knows better than to double my time, but I'm going to make it quick. Congratulations to everyone on the planning commission. I've spent two days scanning through all of the attachments and then going back and reading them thoroughly. I'm focusing narrowly. My submission is an editorial based on the history of part of the site. And my complete support for Summit's plan for this site. If nothing else tonight, I'm focusing on number eight under the conditions of approval. The Confederated Tribes, the Yumitilla Indian Reservation submitted comments relating to the need for a cultural survey for the site. A cultural survey is not a requirement found in the municipal code. However, the applicant is required to meet applicable state and federal laws with respect to above and below ground cultural resources. Not something that planning really normally has to pay attention to. But SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office has a secret file. And Summit knows full well that they have to go through them first before putting a shovel in the ground. And as excavation occurs, if any relics, remnants, whatever are found, they have to stop immediately. We are completely unclear as to the burial location of the so-called Caillou's Five. I have submitted 20 years worth of research to the human, the Confederate Tribes of the Yumitilla. I was surprised at their letter that this is part of the Caillou's Five area of concern. This property was property that the Clackamas Indians who are part of the Grand Ron tribe used for firewood, small animal hunting, gathering, etc. This, the the only okay, so many, many tribes from Oregon gathered at the falls for many reasons, but this particular area was the area of the Clackamas tribe, which would be a grand wrong concern. I do not understand why Yumitilla could request a cultural review of this site. I would recommend that if nothing else, the planning commission approve the staff recommendation on number eight. And also noting that the other thing I'm impressed with this summit is meeting goal 5.4 with natural resources. They have an excellent plan for native and hardy plant restoration. This was a swamp forest. The most we know are some Native American oral tales and early surveys of this property. And people coming off the Oregon Trail, heading into town for food for the first time as they've run out of food for them and their animals. It is a significant place for early pioneers. It was clearly a significant place for the Clackamas tribe. I'm not clear. And I have submitted 20 years of research between myself and several other collaborators on the possible burial site of the Caillou's to the Yumitilla. There was an article in the Oregon City News a few weeks ago that was very misleading. And I'm not pleased with that. And I'm a little curious about the letter from the Yumitilla tribe. So I would say if nothing else, adopt number eight tonight or keep it in mind because there is a definite question as to the sensitivity of this area. And it's also come to a time where SHPO will tell you, don't dig. Or if they tell you not to and you dig and you find something, you stop. And then you finally know something. And I think we have reached that point in our history that we are unable to document. And
All right, thank you, Mrs. Maury. This is definitely not the first time I've heard concerns like yours. It's definitely come up before. I can't say much about it honestly, because I don't know a lot about it. But if it's in the conditions of approval, it is something that's going to be investigated. And then, you know, it's up to the tribe, what they want to do with it. And I can't say much more than that because I really don't know. But we appreciate your But we appreciate your comments and we appreciate you spending your evening with us. And with that, we have Mr. Jeff Goodman.
Good evening, Chair and the members of the planning commission. As others have echoed, thank you for the work that you have devoted on this, not only this evening, but over many weeks, months, and has been noted by others, years to bring this project to fruition. I live in Lake Oswego. I'm a past eight-year member of the Lake Oswego City Council. And also roughly 30-plus years ago, I worked for a company that installed piping in the Rosman landfill to collect the gas, gases from the decomposition of garbage. But I note that was almost 35 years ago. With respect to this specific project, I'd want to offer two thoughts. Number one, part of the project to make this work is the creation of a second urban renewal district for the city. And there has been concern that a second urban renewal district will be in conflict with the existing urban renewal district for downtown. And I'm here to offer the suggestion and the idea, and indeed the thought that I believe that it is enhancement of and will make both parts of the city better. It is not an either-or, it is an and. By having enhanced business activity at the site that is proposed, that is for this proposal and this project will enhance the downtown and the downtown will help make this be a better project. Excuse me. Secondly, then, with respect to the issue of using urban renewal financing, it is like anything else, a tool. It can be used well, it can be used poorly. It's a function of the people that you have overseeing it over the many years. You are making an investment decision that by putting the urban renewal district in place over the course of the 25 or 30 years that is in place, when all is said and done, that the property taxes that will come from the project will be far more than what would have occurred if no urban renewal district has been put in place. I think the fact that this project has been in place or tried to be put in place for at least a decade is evidence that the urban renewal financing is a tool that should be used to help this project go forward. I'll take less than my six minutes, but I will close by thanking the members of the commission, the chair, for your part, for your work on this to move this significant project for the city going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Those are great comments, and I know that a lot of people in the city are thinking a lot of the same things, so. With that, we go to our last testimony, which is Mr. Dan Fowler.
Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. I'll just start out by saying it's been about 25 years since I stayed up this late for a public hearing, but I was on the other side of the bench. Anyway, it's really, it's really great to be here, and I want to start off by complimenting what a great job I believe Summit's team has done in putting together top-level professionals that have given great thought to developing the Rosman landfill. And I want to just read a few things that I think are important in looking at their work. They have really done a good job in meeting all of the zoning requirements and the various codes. And I would encourage you, supporting the conditions that they're proposing. I will say too, and this isn't really criteria, but in listening to Summit's presentations and even again tonight, I can't tell you how I feel that this team really does care. They really care about what's going to happen here in Oregon City. The fact that they're working with Liz in the downtown and really taking an interest in what businesses are there and what are the gaps. You know, when they say that, I really believe them. And to have that level of care in a development team that's doing a project of this size, I really believe is rare. So I really want to compliment on that. But these are a few thoughts. I have 11 points. I'm going to make them in less than three minutes. The site needs to be developed as a master plan and planned at one time because it was a formal intro. Having the entire site planned is critical to provide the necessary cap and recovery system. This project accomplishes that. We need more housing. The project adds housing. Housing helps drive activity, and this will benefit all of downtown, as someone just spoke of. Room for a grocery. If we're going to have housing downtown in a walkable community, we need a grocery store close by. There's no other site in the lower area of our town to accommodate a grocery. It helps downtown. If we do not have more people living downtown before the courthouse moves to the hilltop area, the businesses, especially restaurants, will suffer. This and others will, this project and other projects will help add housing. Minimal traffic disruption. This project is close to I-205 and 213. By the nature of the location, most of the traffic from outside Oregon City will not drive through our city to get there. Provides connectivity. Roads, trails, sidewalks in this area will be improved and connected. Better for the environment. With the environmental closure agreements and the cap and recovery system required, the project will cause the area to be safer and cleaner than it is today. Another way that it helps downtown, this project is in an urban renewal redevelopment area. By adding value to the area, it will provide money for improvements to the core of downtown, such as parking structures, improved sidewalks and bicycle pathway connections. If not this, what? As I see it, we have a choice. Support a well-thought-out, vibrant, mixed-use communal community or hold out for two or three big-box stores that meet code that don't need approval of the planning city commissioner or citizens. Did I say jobs? It is estimated that this project will create over 3,000 construction jobs and close to 1,000 permanent jobs of all types. And it was just mentioned that there's a huge number of people that have supported this through signing a petition. So I just would close by encouraging both the staff and you, members of the commission, to find a way to get to yes on the remaining issues that are outstanding. It's something our community needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler, for spending such a late evening with us. Doesn't sound like you, you do that very often, but we appreciate your time. All right, I can use some. I could use a little guidance here. There's a lot of concerns from the public. Do we want the applicant to try to address these all in 10 minutes, or do you think we? What's the correct protocol?
Chair Schlagenhoff, if you could cut out there just for a second. Before you move to that, I would just ask if there's anyone else that has public or that would like to speak? And we can do the comment card after, if they state their name and city of residence.
Okay, absolutely. If there's anyone else that has a comment they would like to submit and have some public testimony, please raise your hand or your virtual hand.
Seeing none.
I see none. Okay, so what I was trying to say when my internet went bad was there's a lot of questions and concerns from the public. Do we want the applicant to try to address them all in 10 minutes, or should we, is it, is it something, is it possible for us to send them home with some of these questions and address them?
The burden is on the applicant to show, demonstrate compliance with the approval criteria, so they'll always get the last say. They don't necessarily have to do it tonight. What would be useful is to make sure that we have all of the issues or concerns of the planning commission so that that can be addressed before next hearing. Okay, I'll defer to planning commission on what you guys want to do moving forward. You may want to give them a couple of minutes, not full rebuttal time.
Well, I think we do have time to give them 10 minutes or six minutes. I guess it's going to be, I'll leave it up to them, how much they want to address now and then how much they want to bring back. Is that okay? Okay, so let's do that. I'll give them 10 minutes to the applicant for the rebuttal. I'm not sure who's going to be speaking, but go ahead.
So I guess I'm a bit confused. What am I rebutting? What are we as a team rebutting? I heard one individual, the initial speaker had some concerns. Are there other specific concerns written or otherwise that we need to address at this time?
You know, honestly, I did not write them down. There was just a lot. There was, there was a lot of positive. A lot of positive comments. There were. I'd have to re-watch the meeting. There were concerns about the condition eight.
I believe, yeah. Yeah, I don't want to speak for Karen, but I believe in regards to condition eight, she was supporting what it states, which, which was, we're actually doing an IDP with a, with a registered archaeologist with the state where we will have an individual onsite as we are doing any excavation. And it is their job to, to monitor and make sure that we halt excavation should we come across anything which indicates historic significance. The one thing I will throw out is, I believe it used to be a quarry, so they dug out all the rock. Then they filled it all with trash. Then they put a cap on top. And we don't want to go through that cap into the trash layer. So I would be somewhat surprised if we, if we found anything of historic value or significance, but nonetheless, that was the recommendation made to us by staff, and we want to make sure that we're doing everything that's appropriate. So.
Okay, yeah, it makes total sense.
Speak again?
Please.
It's Karen.
Actually, I think public comment has concluded for this evening, and we're at the applicant's rebuttal.
Yes, it has. Okay. Are there any commissioners that have questions for the applicant before we wrap this up?
And then, is it appropriate if staff summarizes all the issues that we hear that we need to address with the applicant as well before we leave, just so we're all on the same page?
Looks like we've got some, some guidance from Commissioner Mitchell.
You knew I had, I'd have one more thing to say, didn't you? Yes, I did. I did forget to bring up one comment and I think this, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And the reason I brought up some of the things that I did tonight and the reason that I'm going to bring up more next time is not because I don't want to see something happen here. I do want to see something happen here. But we only get one shot at this. There's not another piece of property like this. I know it's got its challenges, but in terms of access to downtown, access to 205, access to an interstate rail line, there's not another piece of property like this. And once the planning commission sets up the master plan with, and I'm very anxious to hear the sideboards or the gutters, whatever, that we're going to talk about in two weeks, but this is our one pass for public comment and for representing the community, and then it becomes staff-level decisions. Not that our staff can't handle it, but staff-level decisions basically without public input or planning commission when the DDPs come along. So that's why I want to make sure we get the best possible thing. The thing I wanted to point out, and a couple of people mentioned it, related to transit. And transit, not just Trimate, but thinking about this development at one end of downtown, Willamette Falls at the other end, downtown in the middle. You know, we used to have a trolley. It was probably way ahead of its time. So in turn, thinking about in terms of a trolley or Trimate and those, and the two routes that go past this site. I would encourage the developer to look at the area around the intersection of Market Street and Fourth or the section of Market Street that goes toward Abernathy alongside the end of the Oregon Trail Center. As, as setting aside space for a mini transit center there, it would make sense to me when we work with Trimate that the route that comes down Abernathy would make a right turn on Market into the site and make a stop in the site. That the route that comes down Washington Street would make a left turn into the site and have a site and have a pickup there. If we really want this to be a multimodal site, asking pedestrians, for instance, to cross the lanes of Washington Street to catch a bus on the far side of the street, when I don't think there are any signals planned on that street, that's just not going to be conducive to use of mass transit. So, you know, that right now, that intersection, you've got a, you've got a drive-through location on one corner, you've got queuing for a drive queue on the other corner. You've got a building on the third corner, and you've got the edge of the site on the other corner, the boundaries of the site. So I hope that they don't fence themselves in because sooner or later, hopefully sooner, transit is going to be key, not just Trimate, but moving people from this site to downtown to Willamette Falls. I'll stop.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Okay, I think we can close the public record then. And we need to, we need to find a motion.
Actually, Chair Schlagenhoff, if I could just do some overview and direction for next step, okay? So, yep, so I'm going to outstanding items. So I presented three outstanding items on staff level. The applicant provided their slide with additional options. Staff is willing to work with the applicant to see if we can provide any additional clarity. You know, the requests related to parking, the sideboards, and some of the other smaller issues, we'll just, we'll work through it and we'll let you know what, what things were easily resolved through conditions and what, what things may have a little more tension, and we'll, we'll present that at the July meeting. What I also heard from the planning commission is real questions related to pedestrian design and safety related to raised crosswalks. Are there any locations in kind of that urban core with the residential that may not warrant on-street parking and more of a pedestrian option? And editorial and staff level, I think it definitely is a balance because on-street parking is important in an urban core area, but what is that balance? We'll have that conversation with staff as well as kind of that long corridor that was brought up, kind of connecting the large tenant retail all the way into the Market Street, and what are ways to soften that, so it's not that long slog walk as you kind of traverse the both between districts? As well as the, are there additional directions that can be added to the condition of approval related to Trimate or future shuttles? There is a condition in the land use application at the DDP level when Trimate is ready to revise their service location and their line and where the appropriate transit stop would be. We have that already in DDP conditions of approval, but maybe we can provide additional clarity between now and the next meeting. I think that is it. If there's something else not on that list, do you let me know? I see two participants raising hands. Mr. Mitchell?
I'm fine. I always, I always forget to unraise my hand.
Yeah. Okay, Ms. Richter.
Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to point out that the record is not closed. I think we're continuing with the record open. So although we're not going to take any more testimony tonight, the public hearing is going to end, but the record will remain open until such time as the commission decides to close it and make a decision.
Thank you, Ms. Richter. Do we have some options? Thank you, Ms. Richter. Do we have some options this evening? It sounds like there's kind of general consensus for option one, and that is a continuation of the hearing to the July twelfth. I said city commission hearing, huh? Not, it's planning commission. Excuse me. And, but I do request a verbal one hundred and twenty day waiver from the applicant to September tenth, which is just two weeks past their original August twenty seventh hundred and twenty day date. And that allows both staff time to not feel rushed to get to these complex decisions. And if appealed allows time for an appeal. So with this option, staff does recommend that the applicant provide a verbal one hundred and twenty day waiver to September tenth this evening.
Christina, is it appropriate for me to speak at this time? Okay, could you help me just kind of understand the durations and?
Sure. What the duration provides is continuing to a further meeting. And with that one hundred and twenty day extension, two more weeks, it allows ample time if the project was to be appealed by any parties to get in front of the city commission in time to have a final city decision within the one hundred and twenty day period.
So, so July twelfth, hopefully we come back. We've resolved these eight items that, that we work with staff to figure out solutions that staff can support. Hopefully there's a vote. Hopefully the project is supported. At that point, we enter the appeal period. Is that correct?
There's a fourteen day notice, which could be, yes, potentially appealed.
Okay, so, so the twelfth to the twenty sixth of July is the fourteen day period?
That would seem right. I'm not doing math right now in my head. That seems about right. And then we have a notice period for the planning, I mean, for the city commission hearing.
Okay, well, obviously, we want to get through this process as quickly as possible. We also want to make sure that the product we're producing is of the highest quality possible. I also don't want to take pressure off our team as well as city staff to work through as quickly as possible what these resolutions would be. If you believe that two week extension will substantially increase our chances of having a better project and potentially something that the commissioners can improve, then, then we will accept that.
Staff, staff does believe that.
Do you need me to put something in writing or?
That was enough now and we can follow up later.
Now, now video, okay.
Okay. Yeah, I apologize for closing the public record. It was not closed. That was an error on my part. Okay, so we need a, we need a motion.
We have a hand raised by Commissioner Mitchell.
He snuck it in there. Commissioner Mitchell.
Just a real quick point for Ms. Robertson Gardner. It, it's, it's just, it was a cut and paste thing. I think if you look at page one fourteen of your staff report, there's three or four points there where your response says both not applicable and complies as proposed. I think it's something, it's pretty clear what it should be, but I think something just didn't get cut out, should be cleaned up just for the public record.
We'll be having a revised staff report most likely and a revised hearing and I can address that. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more comments. Are we ready for a motion? Are we clear on what the motion is?
We have a hand raised by Commissioner Staggs.
Where did that come from? Okay, Commissioner Staggs.
In the next, in the next hearing, when we continue this, this application, maybe, maybe I'm stating the obvious, but it seems like we'll need to have quite a bit of time. And I'm just, is the next, is the next hearing going to be dedicated solely to this application? Or will there be other things we'll be considering also?
There will be one other agenda item.
Okay. That's all. I just, I think it's, I think it'd be great if we could have a significant amount of time at the next hearing to, to really do a deeper dive. I mean, this is a huge deal. I mean, I, I am a thousand percent supportive of this project and I think we can all see from what the application, what the applicant has presented tonight and all the public comments that everyone is really excited about doing this. And there's just a lot to talk about. So I think it'd be nice to have some, a significant amount of time in the next meeting dedicated to this, to this application.
Okay, I've got a question now. We have two and a half minutes left. At which point, what happens? Is there a hard cutoff at eleven or can we continue and at least, I don't think we're going to get to the last two items on the agenda. But are we allowed to finish what we're working on? Or what exactly happens at eleven?
It is a rather hard cutoff, although I won't close the Zoom or anything down. I would recommend you do a continuance for this now and then you can just do a continuance for the other items.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion before we run out of time.
Please.
Move to continue GLUA twenty one dash zero 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 one six to the July twelfth, twenty twenty one planning meeting.
Okay, motion by, I believe it was Commissioner Stoll and then second by, was it Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Call roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Hi.
Commissioner Staggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoll?
Hi.
Commissioner Gage?
Hi.
Chair Schlagenhoffer?
Hi.
Motion approved.
All right. What do we do now?
I recommend we can continue.
You didn't call my vote.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Zoom. Commissioner West.
I.
I am sorry. I think we're all suffering from sleep deprivation. Okay, we've got a minute to go. We just continue these last two agenda items to the next meeting. Someone's screen froze. I hope it's not mine.
Nope, you're good. That's fine. Yep.
All right.
I'll make a motion to continue the rest of the agenda to the next meeting.
Second.
Okay. All right, we got a motion and a second. A call roll.
Commissioner West?
I.
Commissioner Stoll?
Hi.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Hi.
Commissioner Gage?
Hi.
Commissioner Staggs?
Yes, I.
Chair Schlagenhoffer?
All right. All right. Thank you. Motion is approved. Appreciate everybody's time tonight and we are adjourned.